It is 5:11. We all have food. I'm sorry Brett that you're not here and enjoying food with us. And hi Dina, thank you for joining. So, we're gonna call this meeting to order at 5:11. I don't see Charlie. Can I get someone to make a motion to approve and accept the agenda, please?
Sure, I will.
One second? Second. Natalie? Okay, all those that approve the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, we have an agenda, thank you. I'll wait until the... Sorry, we're starting the recording.
Recording in progress.
Cool. Alright, so one thing I failed to start with, since a lot of us are new to each other, is I would like to go around the room and just do a quick introduction. Who you are, why you're here, or why you think you're here. And where you're from, and maybe some funny tidbit about yourself. So, Paul, sorry, you're the guinea pig, we're gonna start with you.
Um, Paul Afra, Pittsburgh resident. I was conned into joining this. No, I have kids in school, getting more involved in the community. Trying to give back, I guess, in some way. Yeah. That's about it. Three kids.
Three kids? Yeah.
Coach.
Anything funny?
Not that I can share.
Best movie? No, no, I'm just trying to...
You did this last time, it's hard to decide.
PG meeting.
Yeah, okay, there we go. Alright, go ahead.
I'm Lauren Thomas. This is my first open meeting, never done anything like this. I'm a registered nurse down in Rutland. I have a dog. I live in Brandon, we're fixing up our house. And I'm currently learning how to play the banjo.
Oh, cool!
Open mic, open mic.
I know. We go, and then I'm like, ooh, next week.
Hi, my name is Jasmine. I'm seventeen. I'm gonna be a senior in high school. I am a student representative on the school board. I work as a lifeguard in the summer. And I live in Pittsburgh. I don't have anything particularly funny about me, I'll be honest.
I'll hold back any snide comments. But, um, my name's Brendan McLaughlin. I'm, uh, this is going into senior, sounds weird to say, but going into my senior year as well. Um, I've been a student representative since my freshman year. Applying to college this year, as most of my fellow seniors are, and my top school is American University. That's my dream school. There's a lot of fun things about me, but... Kinda blanking right now. My top three favorite movies, very diverse: Stepbrothers, Up, and The Notebook.
The Notebook?
Very diverse.
Very nice.
My name is Natalie Steen. I've been on the board since 2010, I think. Around there. I joined initially because I have four boys. I have one that just graduated, another senior, one at Nashabe, and a ninth grader. And I don't know, there's something funny about me. I... My favorite movie is Star Wars, anything Star Wars, which is, people find surprising. And I always dreamed to be an undercover spy FBI agent, which is kinda funny. That never happened, though.
Could still be one.
Yeah.
This could just be a cover.
Like Perry the Platpon.
You just need a hat.
Hi, everyone. I'm René Sanchez. I am the interim superintendent of Rutland Northeast. I, this, I'm still in the second month of my role. So I'm really happy to be here. I have three kids, just graduated one, and I still have two in high school. And, let's see, well, it's not really funny, but things that I really like to do, I really like to do trivia, and I really like to cook outdoors. And favorite movies are things like The Graduate and Young Frankenstein.
Cool. Alright. My name is Lori Bertrand. I am from Sudbury. I've been the chair of this board for a few years now. I have three kids also. One, I just returned to college this past weekend. I have a senior with you guys, and I have a 10th grader. Who is currently out there playing football. So, um, let's see, what else can I tell? Oh, and the funny thing about me is that I broke into a storage unit this weekend. Actually, the storage facility is where I broke into. The storage unit was easy, I had the key for that.
Hi, everyone. My name is Jessica Markowski. I don't think I can follow up with that one.
No, you don't.
I currently live in Florence. I have three children that all attend Nashabe. A sixth grader, a third grader, and a second grader. They keep me very busy. I decided to join the school board to get to know more people. I'm not originally from Vermont. And obviously because my children attend this school district. And I enjoy cooking, gardening, and I'm a really funny sarcastic person, but shy in the beginning, so.
It's gonna be great.
Hi, I'm Fernanda Canales. I live in Ocean. I... I'm on the school board because I can't leave education. I was an educator for thirty-nine years, including sixteen years in this district. And... I feel really old because I have two grandchildren who are of school age now. How did that happen? Anyway, so, I really enjoy, uh, being able to support the Rutland Northeast School District. And... Let's see. Oh, something funny now, but not so funny then, was that this summer, previous to leaving a sixteen, well, twenty-hour flight, I confused the time of our flight and showed up at the airport for a one o'clock flight that had left at 1:00 a.m. So we missed our plane, so that meant that we added thirty more hours to our flight for the day, because we had to spend thirteen hours in the airport waiting for our flight to actually leave. So, not funny then, funny now. Never to be repeated.
Uh, I'm Kevin Thornton. I'm from Brandon. I'm on the board because I believe public education is fundamental to democracy and to the upward mobility of poor children. I really watch movies more than once. Yeah, I'm just gonna end it there.
How about you two over there?
I don't understand the assignment.
Try again.
Um, I'm Brenda Fleming. I'm the business manager. And am I supposed to say something funny?
You already did, but you can do it again.
Oh, no, I'm done, and that's the best I got. Oh, do you think there should be a meeting?
Barbara Efling is not coming. So no. Okay?
I don't know, I just want my... I didn't miss the meeting options I wanted.
Debbie Alexander is the superintendent of the building structure and assessment. I think it's something funny that happened. I would say, um... What do you think? At least that something foolish happened to me. But that's funny that I can't figure it out.
Okay. Um, how about we start with Brett online?
Hello? I can go, whatever you want. Will I go, Dina?
Are you feeling better?
No, right ahead, my question.
Yeah, so Brett Mullen, Pittsburgh. Uh, I unfortunately have COVID at the moment, so my sense of humor has been impacted negatively by the disease. But I'll, I promise to be funny next time when I'm there in person.
Awesome. Brett is from Pittsburgh also, so, if you didn't say that. Okay, and I think the only other person up there is Dina. Hi, Dina.
Hi, I'm Dina Atwood. Um, I'm an attorney. And I represent your school districts. I have done it for quite some time in your supervisory union. I don't know if it's funny, but everybody laughs when I say it. I don't like attorneys. We'll go with that one. Any of my jokes, I probably can't tell you, so.
Alright. Well, thank you for that. This is a good board to be on. We are open, you know, we listen to everyone, or try. And, uh, we'll go there. So, starting off our retreat is Dina, that's why she's here with us. She's gonna give us a presentation on the new open meeting law. And so I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Okay, so, it's interesting. I heard, I heard that a bunch of you were, were new, is that true?
Relatively speaking, yes.
So I'm gonna roll through, I don't know how, how much time you guys want me to do this, but I'm gonna roll through sort of the open meeting law and also the change, right? To everything that happened, does that work for you? And how much time do you want me to... How fast do you want me to talk?
Um, I think I would like you to talk fast enough so people understand it, but slow enough so they understand it too? Can you do that?
Right, we can do that.
Dina, do you have a presentation?
Vermont has, as many states do, Vermont has the philosophical, you guys can see this, or no?
Do you want us to share?
Do you want us to share it? Because we can't see.
Yeah, can we share it?
I'm gonna make you a, um...
Presenter?
A host.
How do we do this?
Hey, I've made you a host, so you should be able to present.
Okay, so I should be able to share my screen? That's what you're telling me, right?
Yes.
Alright, so let's see if I do...
Yep, and just do present on the...
You seeing that?
It would be...
You guys can see that?
What is it, present?
Okay, so Vermont has, like a lot of states, an open meeting law because you wanna have...
Sorry, Dina, you're, you're in copyrights right now, or that's what we can see? I think that's what that says. Or something basics. Well, yeah, and it's, and it's showing it in a big format and a little format. So is there a way, can you put it in presentation mode? Please?
Oh, you know what? It's showing it in a different screen, that's why.
Okay.
Hey, you know, you would think I would understand how to do this.
You're a lawyer, not an IT person.
Well, yeah, there's that. Hold on a second. Let me pick which screen I'm in. Alright, let me move stuff again. Sorry, give me a second.
No worries.
I'm so much better at negotiating your contract. I do screen. Let me see how that works. You don't see it, do you?
All you see is a black screen.
I'm not enjoying this. You can see it. You see that?
Yes.
Yes!
But you can go to present. Present mode.
Is it that, that red button at the top?
Slideshow.
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 You still only see, you see the two things.
Yeah.
Okay. You might have to do...
Yes.
How's that?
That is...
There we go!
Bingo.
Holy moly, yay!
Thank you.
Flip the screens. Now you can see that, right?
Yes. We can even read it.
Awesome. Okay, so, um, wow, now I'm gonna have to talk even faster. So, in Vermont, and I heard one of you say that you joined the board because you believe that boards are very important for democracy and for, I think, information and public involvement. And you're right. In Vermont, that's a, that's a very big philosophical basis for how we run certain aspects of our government. And you are part of government. You're part of the municipal system in Vermont. And part of it is also to have public participation. And, so, with the open meeting law, and since there are a couple new, new people, I'm gonna just go through the changes that, that occurred at the end of the last legislative session. Are not earth-shattering, but they're a little bit different. And we'll go through those as well, but I also wanna touch on some basics. One of the things I did wanna point out at the beginning is that there's always been a statutory obligation for board chairs and superintendents to participate in training annually, which is at least eight hours of training that talks about open meeting law, educational leadership, all those things that are listed there, roles and responsibilities of both boards, SU level boards, school district boards, and the roles and responsibilities of superintendents. Vermont Public Records Act, I have some clients who, you know, when, when superintendents propose the hard issues around budget time, I have some clients who last year got a lot of public records requests, and they take a lot of time. But the training also covers collective bargaining and education funding and school finance. I have always suggested that all board members avail themselves of that. I think VSBA has online training modules that you can access. I think they have new board member training modules that you can access. And I think those are good. I think a lot of board members do not only networking, but some training at the VSBA, BSA. Brenda Cattellius Basbo is one of, also sort of the sponsors. And BCSEA Annual Meeting in May, that typically happens at Lake Morey. A lot of information, I think, gets transmitted there, and there's some training that occurs there. So I'm big about training. I think it's an important thing. But when we're talking about the open meeting law, we are talking about your boards. And one of the basic issues that we have to talk about is that meetings of a public body are open to the public, except when they're not, right? There are times when we can go into executive session, and I'm gonna go through that for you. For those of you who are new, not... Executive session doesn't cover a lot of things. Back when I first started, there were probably a lot more uses of executive session that were not lawful than there are now, because I think people are understanding that there are limitations about talking about things without the public having the right to know, and that there really has to be a basis for why we would exclude public knowledge, or public access to knowing that. One of the things you should generally understand, if you guys are going back to other boards, other... You know, is this the OVU or the Rutland Northeast Board, or is it all OVU?
Right now, it's just the OVUU Board.
Okay, so OVU Board. So for those who are... Those, those people who go to the Rutland, who are the Rutland Northeast on that board, you know, you may wanna explain to your colleagues as well, is all your boards have to be concerned about public accommodation requirements, and people... Your meetings. And we'll talk about, that's where some of the changes are about how you can hold your meetings and how people can access them from the legislature. If you are going to be doing, we take proposed rules, which you are more than likely not going to do, this impacts more on, say, the state. They have to electronically record hearings. You're not holding hearings on, on proposed rules. But the new rules, as you'll see when we go through, it's great that you guys are videotaping this, because that's one of the changes that you're responsible for as of July 1st. So a meeting, I get asked what a meeting is a lot of times, right? So a meeting is a gathering of a form of the members of a public body, and it's for the purpose of discussing the business of the public body or taking action. And everything is not a meeting, but notice that it's not limited to, hey, physically, we get together. Because you can, you can inadvertently create a meeting by doing things via email. And replying to all. And as Lori is very familiar with, I have a hatred of email. It's not as big as my dislike of other lawyers, but I do have a hatred of email. And I'm always very cautious about when board members start emailing, and that's when I start getting nervous. And a lot of times what precipitates it is quite frankly, you receive an unsolicited email from a parent, or a citi, or, or, typically a parent, but it may be a citizen who doesn't have a student in your school. But typically, it is a parent who has an issue with something that has happened in the school, and they're, and they are presenting you with their understanding of what happened, their anger about what happened, their, you know, their version of the events and everything, and they're just gonna go to the board, and they want the board to know. And then all of you are very concerned, because you rightfully so are, as servants of the, of the public. And you want to address the concern that's brought up, you wanna get additional information, and you start sending things by email. That's when I about faint. Okay? You have to be very careful with that. You should not be discussing things via email. There are times when Lori, as your board chair, is probably sending things out, and very well may say to you, "Do not reply all." There are times when I may have to be involved in something, and as the attorney for the school district, I send things out, and it's a little bit different when I do, because there are some protections in terms of disclosure, and whether or not things are in the public eye immediately. Because attorney-client communication is a little bit different. But we still need to be concerned, sometimes even when it involves me, about whether or not I'm creating a meeting. Right? My presence doesn't all of a sudden make it that we're not creating a meeting. And so you need to be very careful about that. If, for no other reason, why not to do email, I wanna be very clear about it, if we get a public records request, and there is any, I'm going to ask the general question of if you're not communicating solely through SU or, or whether it's particular to your, your school district, I think your emails are all running through your SU level. If you are not doing the business of the board in terms of email communications through that, and you're using your private email, we may need to have you do a search, and we may need to have a discussion about how, whether or not there are other ways and other entities that have to do a search of your personal email. So, email bad for doing a lot of things. So be very careful about email. Email's not bad, and you'll see, I think I have a slide about it, for doing things like sending out agendas, scheduling meetings. Because you're not discussing the business of, of what the board does, right? But if you have an email that says, "Hey, you know, we have that, um, you know, we have that grievance coming up where, you know, the, the teachers association is very upset about something, and I'm kinda thinking, this is how I think about it," that's a problem. If it's an email that says, "Hey, look, I'm getting a lot of input from my community members about the budget, and we really should be looking at whether or not we wanna look at this line on the budget," that's a problem too, because you're talking about the business of the public body, okay? There are times when we do employment actions or grievance actions where you are in a deliberative stage, and I'm typically involved, and, and we can have a discussion back and forth that is not considered to be something that has to be done in public. But it's very limited. I don't feel very comfortable a lot of times with doing that, or we put limits on how we visit that. Because we should remain mindful of the fact that the public has a right, and, and you should want the public to be involved. Right? They are the ones who are supporting the education institutions in your towns, and, and it's incredibly important. So you are members of a public body. One of the changes that happened in this last legislative session is this very long definition of what a public body is, clarified that it's, it's also subcommittees. And I will tell you that, that had been the subject of some litigation, had been subject to some litigation from towns. It had been subject to discussions and a complaint filed with the Attorney General's Office within the last couple of years, where there was a subcommittee that was brought to life to ironic, it, it's interesting, this is where it tends to happen for schools, a subcommittee that was brought to life for doing a superintendent's search. And it was a subcommittee that, because there wasn't a quorum of board members on it, and it included the public, and it included somebody, you know, from the teachers association, or a couple teachers' association people, you know, somebody from the support staff, people from the central office, that the school board did not believe that they had to host the meeting or treat it as a public body. That's a subcommittee now, and that's been made very clear. And so, you need to, you need to be careful. I don't know if you have any other subcommittees, some boards do. I have a client that has a policy committee that meets monthly, separate and distinct from the overarching supervisory board. And, you know, their meetings have to be posted the same way as it was a regular board meeting. And same thing with minutes and everything else that applies, because they are considered a public body. So I don't know if you all are doing subcommittees, but if you are, you should be adhering to the open meeting law and all of the posting requirements that come under that. So what is a quorum? A quorum is not the majority of members present. It's the majority of members of your actual board. So if, if your board has ten people, it's the majority, it would be six people of your board. Alright? For action of the board, it's the majority of the board, not just the majority of the quorum, must vote in favor. So, if you have six people present, and you have a ten-person board, and, I wanna make sure I get this right, because this is math, and this is why I became a lawyer, right? And you only have four people vote, while that is the majority of the quorum that is present, that is not a majority of your board. Everybody gets that?
So if we had two people that abstained, that, then that would not be a, a vote that would pass? Is what you're saying?
If they don't vote in favor, correct.
Okay.
And that went into action as of July 1st?
No, this has been ongoing.
Well, uh... That could be a problem for us. I just wanna be clear that if, if you have a, a ten-person board, six people show up, does every vote therefore have to be unanimous for that action to, to be legal?
It needs to be the majority of the board, so yeah, so it would, it would be the six people. I will double-check it for you, but yeah, it, it is for the six people. So it's not just a majority of the quorum.
Okay, so the follow-up question from that is, for much of last year, we had a board that's got thirteen spots on it, but there were only seven people in those spots. We had six vacancies, five vacancies, I guess. Do those vacancies count as forum spots, or, or majority spots? In other words, if we had seven people meet, and we had a four-to-three vote, did we act illegally by passing that?
You had a four-to-three vote because you had seven, which would have been a majority of what your board is. I will double-check that for you. I will double-check that for you.
We did a lot of business like that.
Yeah, it's not surprising to me that you did. Let me double-check with you on the Robert's Rules part.
Thank you.
A lot of boards unfortunately had to do a lot of business. It's hard finding board members to do things. Laurie, did you wind up voting a lot last year or not?
Well, we voted a lot towards the... After March, we lost a bunch of our board members. So we were down to an eight-member board out of 13. We weren't able to fill... We were able to fill three of those positions, but not until June. So between March and... Well, actually, we filled them, and they're not even here until tonight. So we did not fill those positions from March until August, essentially. And so there were a couple of votes that we did take that would have been only seven of us, or eight, probably seven, actually.
Seven would have been fine, right? So on a 13-person board, six and a half is 50%. So seven is the majority, so about seven did.
Right, but we didn't... I think what Kevin's question is, is that because we only had seven members, if those seven members were split, let's just say four and three, and it passed, is that still legal? Or did all seven board members have to vote yes in order for it to be legal, because we have a 13-member board?
And so you had votes that were split on the seven?
Right, yeah, I mean, yeah.
I will double-check it for you guys. I'm going to go with, what, your budget's probably one of them, which though was voted and was certified anyhow, right?
Yeah, yes.
Because the tone of Kevin's voice kind of is like, Dina, that was probably our budget, didn't pass with everybody voting yes, right?
Well, I would... A lot of... I mean, we didn't... We had many unanimous votes, but we had six-to-one votes. We had five-to-two votes. We had four-to-three votes.
Okay.
A lot of things.
Yeah, I will double-check that one.
I mean, would it be the majority of the voting body? So if you have four vacant seats, you have four seats that can't... That nobody's voting for. So I would wonder if it's that. Not the majority of what a board is supposed to be, but the majority of your current voting body.
That's not what the previous slide said.
It didn't specifically say that, so that's what I'm asking.
Well, yeah, so we'll defer to you, Dina. I mean, I think what we'd like to do is probably move on at this point, because we don't know, and you'll get back to us.
What I'll do is I will double-check why I put that down there. And so I'll take a look at Robert's Rules, because that's where it's going to fall out on. A meeting is not... And Laurie, I can email you and Renee tomorrow, probably.
Okay.
And that way you can tell people... And I'm writing this down, by the way. A meeting is not communication between members of the public body in person or through email, telephone, or teleconferencing to schedule a meeting, organize an agenda, distribute meetings, provided that you don't... No other business of the public body is discussed or conducted, and any written communications are available under the Public Records Act, remember? So that's why you have your SU-level emails, and so please use those. Sometimes people get together at social gatherings. And so if you're at a Christmas party, and of a 13-member board, if eight people show up at the Christmas party, because you're all invited, that's okay. Don't talk about board stuff. Have a Christmas party, a holiday party. Don't talk about board stuff. And that's not a meeting, right? So as long as you're not discussing specific business, and you don't expect to discuss it, then you're fine, okay? You know, and I don't know if you do wagon wheel meetings? I'm just trying to figure. Sometimes board members go and visit other board meetings. You can have more... You can have a quorum that goes, as long as you're not doing anything that's going to go and take any... You're not going to be taking any binding action about that, right? So if you get invited to go to Barstow's board meeting, and a forum of you go, okay. You're not going and doing the business of the board. You can go, all right? There are four types of meeting: regular, special, emergency, and an adjourned meeting. An adjourned meeting typically had happened a couple of times during COVID for different school districts. You're not really going to get into adjourned meetings, but they would be... Perhaps you have issues around your annual meeting, or perhaps there are other meetings that it comes up with, but we'll go through this. Regular meetings are the ones that you hold on a regular basis at the same time, same place, as approved or set by law. You guys make the information available to any person upon request. You typically set your regular meetings at your organizational meeting, I'm assuming, following town meeting day. You also decide what newspaper you're going to post it in. You decide, you know, what places you're going to be posting it in. A special meeting is a meeting that must be publicly announced at least 24 hours before the meeting. You have to post the meeting in or near where you post it typically, your notices for your regular meeting, so your town clerk's offices and your at least two other designated public places. And you have to do it at least 24 hours before the meeting. So if you're going to have a 5:00 PM meeting tomorrow, then you had to post it by 5:00 PM today. You also have to give notice either orally or in writing to each member of the board at least 24 hours before the meeting, except that a member may waive notice of a special meeting. And typically, members do, because sometimes we have a hard time getting people, because most of you probably have your own... Are employed, right? So sometimes it's difficult getting you. An emergency meeting can be held without a required public announcement, without required posting a notice, and without that 24-hour notice to members, provided some public notice must be given as soon as possible before any such meeting. You can only do an emergency meeting when it's necessary to respond to an unforeseen occurrence or condition requiring immediate attention. That's a difficult standard to meet. I have to be honest with you. I get asked sometimes around budget time, hey, Dina, can we... Wait a minute, this came up. And you can't... It's hard to tell me, and hard with a straight face, tell me, when you've been doing multiple meetings, and you guys have forsaken your families to be at budget meetings, that some of these things that you're talking about are unforeseen occurrences that are going to occur. So it's very hard to meet an emergency meeting standard. Typically, it's a health and safety issue would be what it would be. You have to post an agenda at least 48 hours in advance for a regular meeting. Within your central office, there... I believe it's handled through Renee's staff, and they know this, and they do this. You need to... You should be posting it on your website. And you guys identify town clerks, and at least two other designated public places that you do it. For a special meeting, you do it in the same places, but at least 24 hours in advance. The agenda should reasonably inform the interested public of what may be discussed at the meeting. I get questions a lot about public comment period. You all decide how you're going to handle public comment, whether it's going to be at the start of the meeting. I have some boards that do it at the start and at the end of the meeting, some that do it at the end of the meeting, some allow it whenever anyone present has something to add. I would caution against doing that, because that could turn into sort of a pre-fore-all. Overall, and I've had to talk to various boards within your SU about this in general, and for a lot of clients, is that it's okay, and you're permitted... The board chair is permitted to establish reasonable rules to maintain order. So if you have a hot-button item, and 50 people show up, and they're going to be somewhat redundant about their points, you can do reasonable time limits for each speaker. In Barstow, one of the board meetings that I participated in, they were seeking public comment about whether or not they should designate public high schools, and whether or not their citizens were doing that. And they wanted to make sure that everybody had an opportunity to talk. So the board chair did establish some reasonable time limits for each speaker to then permit that if there was... You know, if we needed to go through the listing a second time for people. And it worked out, I think, fine, and people were gracious about it and did what they needed to do. Minutes need to be... Matters of public record are kept by your clerk or secretary of your board. They're available for inspection by any person. There are... You can charge a copy cost upon request after five calendar... They can get them after five calendar days from the date of the meeting. And you also have to post them no later than five calendar days. And I believe that Renee's office does do that, puts them up on your website. They're typically tagged as being unapproved, because you approve them at your next meeting. You do not... Typically, they go on the website, like I said, and I think that's a great place to put it. We're going to talk about this. There's a slight modification to your requirements of how you're going to... What you're going to post on your website. You can remove draft minutes once you're approved minutes. So if you met in July, and you tonight approved those minutes, you can remove the draft minutes from July and put the approved minutes in there. But minutes shall not be removed from the website sooner than one year from the date of the meeting for which the minutes were taken. You can... A lot of times, boards archive them. I'm not quite sure exactly what you all are doing. Your written minutes shall cover all topics and motions that arise at the meeting, give a true indication of the business of the meeting. They should identify members of the public body present and all other active participants in the meeting, all motions, proposals, resolutions made, offered, considered, and the disposition made of them, results of any vote, with a record of the individual vote of each member if a roll call is taken, and indicate any non-members who attend executive session. So if you invite me into an executive session, your minutes should reflect that you invited me into an executive session or that you invited Brenda, that you invited Renee, because they're also both not board members. When can you exclude the public? When you're doing quasi-judicial deliberations, decision-making in quasi-judicial proceedings, if the decision is in writing and available as a public document after its issuance. So quasi-judicial deliberations are going to be things such as if you're... If you are looking at... Unfortunately, sometimes student matters have to come before the board where you're discussing a long-term suspension or a potential expulsion of a student. Hopefully, those are very few and far between for you, but those are... That's a board action, and that's a quasi-judicial deliberation, meaning there are constitutional protections that have attached to the student of due process. And you're sitting as a decision-maker, kind of as a court, kind of, sort of, quasi-judicially, sitting there, and you're going to make that decision. It also happens in grievances. And we've had a couple of grievances over the years where you all have had to sit and make decisions regarding that. I had talked about with deliberations, which... So once you do the hearing, which typically is going to also be in executive session, because it's one of the grounds, whether it's a personnel action or a student issue, a student record issue action, or student conduct action, you are going to deliberate on that. And you have the ability to have a conversation without the public being present to discuss that. Typically, school boards don't exclude from meetings for routine administrative matters. It's a little... It's not a good... It's not a common issue that boards go into discussions about that. So just want to put that there. Wait a minute, let me make sure I got that. So for executive session, how do you get there? You make a motion in open session. You state the reason for the executive session. An affirmative vote, a majority of members present. In some cases, finding a substantial disadvantage is required, okay? And so if it's an affirmative vote of the majority of members present, I'm changing however I put on that other slide. Because if you can go into executive session merely by an affirmative vote of a majority of members present, but I'm still going to look up. I think that I misstated in that other slide. But who may attend? You may invite in members of the public... I mean, the members of the public body, that's you, they're going to go in, and those who are invited. And you should reference that in your motions, and again, as I said, in your minutes. So staff, clerical assistants, legal counsel, people who are subjects of the discussion, or people whose information is needed. If you're doing a student matter, what you put in the minutes and how specific you are, you're not going to use the student's name. And I would say that you would just identify the parents of the affected student. And we can talk, if you have a student matter, about that, why to do that.
Can you explain what a...
What actually... May I begin? Is there a question?
Yes. Could you explain what a finding of substantial disadvantage is? I don't understand it.
Yep, that's going to be the next slide after this one, okay?
Can I ask a quick question?
I'm sorry?
May I ask a quick question?
Sure.
You said that you can include the parents' names in the minutes?
No.
No? Okay, good.
Yeah.
Just a quick...
No, I would... Parent of affected, you know, invited parents of student. That's what I would put in the minutes?
You would just say parents. You wouldn't say their names, right?
I wouldn't say their names, no. And by the way, if it's a guardian, and it's like their grandparent, I would say grandparent of student, because then...
That's identified.
I would be a little concerned that maybe somebody could identify. So... But that's also coming out of the FERCAP realm, right? There's... And so I have concern about identifying students, because we shouldn't be identifying students. And clearly, a parent's name would identify a student.
Right.
So the only thing that you can make a decision on that's binding in executive session without moving to open session to vote on is if you're negotiating or securing real estate options. All other binding action that is part and parcel of what you're talking about in executive session. So if you have a conversation about, will we uphold this grievance? Will we do A, B, and C? You're going to come out of executive session into open session, and you're going to take formal action. When you're in executive session, you're only supposed to discuss the matters that were cited as the basis for the executive session motion. So a public body needs to find substantial disadvantage for contracts, labor relations, agreements, arbitration or mediation, grievances, pending or probable civil litigation or prosecution to which the public body may be part of, or confidential attorney-client communications made for the purpose of providing professional legal services to the body. Only... You can go in only if the public body first finds that premature general public knowledge would clearly place the public body or person involved in the matter at a substantial disadvantage. Labor relations agreements... Is there a question about why discussing that in public would be potentially a substantial disadvantage to the board?
No.
Okay. The interesting thing is, I will say this. The interesting thing is that we do negotiate your contracts in public session. We discuss, however, our strategy in executive session, okay? Arbitration or mediation is... And that's typically a lot of grievances that goes with grievances for an employee. There's a... It can be an embarrassment to the employee. It could be an issue of if you don't uphold a grievance, right? If it gets to you, which means it's gone through the principal and the superintendent, and they've upheld the grievance, and it gets to you, and you, as a board, do not agree with the actions, because you have every right to not agree with the actions of the principal and the superintendent. If you've done that in public, first of all, you should be doing... It's confidential personnel action. And it should remain a confidential personnel action, because there can be substantial disadvantage to the person, to your employee. It could impact on their ability to be employed. it could impact on their ability to be employed, either way, whether it's employed with you or employed anywhere else. Pending or probable civil litigation or prosecution to which the public body may be part, a party, again, that's things that it, it would be a substantial disadvantage typically to talk about civil litigation. I've had several clients that unfortunately I've had to do civil litigation with, and when we discuss it, which hits the last two, right, it's pending or probable civil litigation, which the board is a party to, and it's also confidential attorney-client communications made for the purpose of providing legal services to the body, there are some pretty significant grounds about why you wouldn't want your lawyer's opinion put out in public, and why you wouldn't want to have the strategy or what's occurring in a civil litigation be made public, especially if you're engaged in settlement discussions as part of that civil litigation, which is a confidential process. Civil litigation requires that the parties attempt mediation, and so, and that mediation is confidential, you meet with a third-party mediator, and it's not something that can be brought forward in a court of law. And so there can be a substantial disadvantage to that. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So we've used that a lot, I think it was just the way you phrased it made him, made us all wonder what that was.
To find it?
Yeah, like, so we use that, a substantial disadvantage, all the time when we're talking about negotiations and things like that. When you were talking about it earlier, it sounded like a new thing, I think, to all of us.
No, 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 it's that, that you're, you've been doing this, that when you've gone to talk about contracts, labor relations, grievances-
Yeah.
-all of the things that are listed, that you are doing two, you should be doing two motions, one is a motion to find that there's, that the board finds that discussing it in public session would be a substantial disadvantage to either the board or a party that's involved, and then it would be a, if that gets approved, there would be a motion to move into executive session.
Okay, so now, okay, so we were only doing one motion, but now it should be two.
It should be, and I understand, most boards have sort of pushed them together, but it should be two separate motions, and I can give you sort of the standardized language for, for what that would sound like, and while it's a standardized language for the motion, I would say your board still should be having a conversation if anybody has a question about whether or not it's a substantial disadvantage, right?
Yep. Does everyone understand that?
That we can-
Okay.
Great.
So here are the things that you don't have to, have a finding of substantial disadvantage to go into executive session, you can just make the motion to go into executive session, you all talked about, yep, we're going to go into executive session, and if you see it's important, appoint employee, evaluate, discipline, or dismiss a public officer, but any final decision about that, you would come out in an open meeting, and the reasons would be explained, I would say under your collective bargaining agreement, you would be issuing under your grievance procedures, you would be coming out, you would be either voting to, if you were terminating an employee, to terminate them, but that the order would be issuing, or we've done it, and you can do it, where you say that the order would be issuing, and then if somebody in the public, because you're still in a deliberative stage at that point, then if somebody in the public wants to have the subsequent written order from the board, they would be able to request that as a public records item. And so these are all the things that, that you don't have to find a substantial disadvantage in order to go into executive session. Collective bargaining, those of you who sit on the collective bargaining, we do treat it like it's a meeting, which is interesting to me, but it is actually not officially a meeting of the public body, it is the one thing that is, is sort of exempted out from that. There was a litigation that happened back in the day, for those of you who have been on boards for quite some time will remember, boards were pushing for labor negotiations to be done in public, they thought that that would be beneficial for the public to hear some of the proposals, the NEA was not in general okay with doing them publicly at that point in time, and so there was a clash, there was litigation, and the Superior Court came out and said, that's not even a meeting of a public body, because what that is, is that's a mutual, it's a two-party discussion, in that if you exclusively give the power to one party to decide when and if an executive session would occur, that, that impacts and is not something that would be happening in a bilateral discussion about, about collective bargaining. That being said, every board that I deal with, and every board that I do labor negotiations for, including your own, does an agenda and notices, and does minutes and puts them up, yours happened to be done, as I said previously, clearly in public, you know, the minutes reflect everything that's talked about, but, so that's just one thing to keep in mind. If you receive an alleged violation, that you violated the open meeting law, there are certain requirements, and the print is very small on this, you're supposed to publicly respond within 10 calendar days after receiving notice, you call, typically, we have to call a special meeting to deal with that, there's a whole way of managing of whether or not, whether or not the board finds that there has been a violation, whether or not the board finds that there has been an inadvertent violation, or whether or not the board finds that there hasn't been a violation. Typically, boards do involve their attorneys, at least to ask them about how to proceed in these. If you do not respond to an alleged violation that you, if a member of the public says that you violated the open meeting law, if you fail to respond within 10 calendar days, it's deemed that you denied, and that's important for you to understand, because after you act, the next step is they can take you to Superior Court. So that's why it makes a lot of sense that you move heaven and earth to deal with this within your own board meeting, whether it's something that you have to, to address and avoid, if you have to avoid the action that happened in the meeting, if you have to do whatever you have to do, or that there hasn't been a violation. Because if you go to Superior Court and you lose, and it's found that you did violate the open meeting law, the other individual has the right to seek attorney's fees, if they have an attorney. So there's a cost for violating it. A lot of times, when boards do violate the open meeting law, it really does fall under an inadvertent violation, you can either subsequently, when you're provided notice of it in that subsequent meeting, within those 10 days, that the board then goes and ratifies, or declares void any action taken at or resulting from that meeting that was not properly noticed. You know, people also have to, interestingly, have to have been present, is, if there is, and we can get into that if it comes up for you, that if somebody doesn't show up to your meeting, and they file a violation, how to handle that, because that's problematic, because it needs to have impacted on them, because they were not wrongfully excluded from attending, they didn't, they just didn't attend. But if it's because you failed to notice the meeting appropriately, that's a problem, but that also may be inadvertent. We talked about that. Okay. So, the changes that have occurred, you all are now referred to as advisory, non-advisory, I'm sorry, non-advisory boards, local non-advisory boards, not considered state non-advisory boards. And under the provisions of the law that just passed in the last legislative session, the fact is that you're a non-advisory board, because as a board, you have control over legislative quasi judicial tax, taxing and budgetary matters, okay? You are not required to hold hybrid meetings, state non-advisory boards are required to hold hybrid meetings, meaning that they have an in-person and a remote possibility. You can decide to hold only electronic meetings, remote meetings. You can, as a school board, decide to do that. If you do that, you have to provide access to the electronic meeting, either by participating via streaming, I called it zooming, or telephone access, like what we're doing tonight. Please note that your retreat, you're doing the right way. Back in the day, it used to be boards would go to somebody's house, they'd do a board retreat, and they would think that it was a working group kind of thing, and they didn't have to adhere to the open meeting law. There are no legal exceptions to board retreats being a meeting. So that means that the public has access to your board retreats, and there have never been any exceptions, but, so just understand that. So you can decide to do hybrid meetings, which you did tonight, which is that you physically have a location, and you also provide access electronically or telephonically, for people to participate. I think that's great. You have no obligation to do both. I think it is greater access to the, to as many people as, who possibly could be interested in participating. You may not get a lot of participation, but you're providing as much, the greatest level of participation potentials for people that way. School boards, under the new provisions, must record their meetings, both the audio and visual, and post the recordings for at least 30 days following the approval and posting of the official minutes for a meeting, unless you can show an undue hardship. So on your website, and you have a, there was a young gentleman who is video, videoing this, and that also contains the audio, that should be posted on your website once, but understand this, the way the law reads, it's that you have to at least have it posted for 30 days after you approve the official minutes. So for you, that would be, when you have your meeting in September, that would be when you approve the official minutes for this meeting, I suspect, or, or your next meeting, whatever it is, and then you would, you would be, under the law, obligated to post the video for this. If you can post it prior to then, post it prior to then. There's nothing wrong with posting it, I don't know, in, in a couple of days, whenever it's made available for you, right? Just so you know, undue hardship is defined as that it would be a, there would be a significant difficulty or expense in you being able to comply of having it post, the audio and visual posted, due to factors such as, like, if you were a wicked small school, that you had some low, you know, you didn't have a lot of staffing that could help you with this, or that you had some budgetary constraints or compliance costs. It's going to be a hard, hard time for you to demonstrate undue hardship, as even if the young gentleman was not here from your local access TV doing it, you're recording through Zoom, and I understand that that can be posted, right? You still have to do written meeting minutes as well, I just want to make sure that you understand that, those will be unapproved until your next meeting, and then, as I said, the way the law reads is that once you approve those, you post, if not, if you haven't done so already, your video or audio for, recording of this meeting for at least 30 days. You should have a category listed out on your website that lists for, here's the audio or visual recording for this. If you decide to do purely electronic slash telephone meetings, right, and you don't hold a physical location, you don't have an everyday physical location for your meeting, a resident of the geographic area in which you have jurisdiction, a member of the public body, so one of your fellow board members, a member of the press, may request that you designate a physical location or provide electronic or telephone access to a regular meeting, to a single regular meeting, but it wouldn't be, hey, you've decided as a board to hold all of your meetings electronically, and I'm asking you and wanting to obligate you to have a physical location for five out of your 10 next meetings. That doesn't happen. They can keep individually asking you for each meeting, but, you know, that's not what it is, as a board, you're supposed to be, under the new law, you're empowered to decide that you're not going to have a physical location for your meeting. The individual has to make the request in writing, they have to provide it to you not less than two business days before the date of the meeting. You, you are not supposed to ask or require that the person who's asking for the meeting to have a physical location explain to you the basis for that. Part of that may be because it may be something where, quite honestly, you know, I, I can't afford a computer, but I noticed when I was at the town clerk's office, that your agenda is talking, has something listed that I'm really interested in, and I'd like to hear that. If I don't own the computer and you only do things electronically, then I'm losing the opportunity to be an active public participant and to have access to the meeting. So, I don't know, I'm assuming you're all going to keep a physical location for your meetings? Tell me if you are or you aren't, because we can go through-
I'd like so, yes. I mean, I think we're going to stay hybrid, I think it actually works out well for our board, for those who can't be here, because they have COVID, or supposedly have COVID, come to attend the meetings, and allow us to have a quorum, and it also, like you said, allows for access from the public.
Are there any, oh, excuse me, are there any boards that are, have eliminated physical meetings and gone entirely electronic?
No, but I did have a board that for one retreat wanted to know if they could just do it electronically.
Are there any public bodies in the state that have-
Because of where it was going to, where it was going to be.
Yeah.
Right, you're doing your retreat in your, in your public school, sometimes boards, you know, if they're going to go to Lori's house, you know, they, they may have had a concern to, to come up and, and do this. And then when I told them, oh, by the way, you have to record the whole six-hour meeting that you're going to have, the superintendent did choke a little bit. So I don't know if, in the end, if they changed their location for the retreat. But I have yet to have a board that, that does not do a physical location, because as I said, I think most of the boards I deal with view it as you're providing for the greatest amount of, of potential for participation.
Thanks.
I did not look, but I was informed that BSBA had indicated at some point they were working on language for school boards to post on their websites about the new requirement that you have to post the OPM violation procedures, that, you know, so basically you have to let people know, hey, if you think we violated the, the open meeting law, this is how you come after us. My understanding was that BSBA was, was A, provide, again, provide, was working on that language and was going to provide it to school boards, I don't know if that occurred, and if they have done it, I have not looked at your website to see if it's posted.
It is posted.
So I leave that as something, as a follow-up for the central office and for you all.
Thank you. Renee says it is up on our website, so I assume Melinda did that.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so, Melinda, as you well know, is on top of those things. So, yes.
Awesome.
Well, does anyone have any questions for Dina before we let her go?
Other than I have to look at whether or not I just spoke on that slide.
Right, yeah. So, well, I appreciate you coming, I think we all appreciate you coming and helping us through that. I do have one question, as a lawyer, you might be able to answer.
Uh-oh.
So, so we, in the past, have had a problem with our agenda as far as adding something to the agenda at the beginning of the meeting.
Yeah.
So we have a policy that states that if you want to add something to the agenda, you are supposed to notify the chair three or five days beforehand, so that we can add it to the agenda, so that it can be on the agenda for people publicly to see it. However, there has been a couple of times where things have been, have been added at the start of the meeting that they want action on, and so what I want to know is, what trumps what? So, because as chair, I would like to say, look, our policy says it needs to come to the board, or come to me before we make the agenda. I do realize that something in an emergency might have to be added, you know, at the beginning of a meeting, but nine times out of 10, something that a board member wants to bring onto the board is- is maybe something that we could talk at a future meeting. It's not necessarily emergent. And so my question is, is do I have the ability or do I have to ask the board to say, do you want to vote on? You know, does the board actually vote on it to say yes or no? We want to talk about this tonight? Or can I say, you know, we'll add it to the next agenda?
Okay, so there are a lot of different questions there. So let me run through that.
I thought it was one, two.
There are a lot of different ones. Generally speaking, that's great that you guys have a policy and have an expectation that's set. That's interesting to me because I don't think I deal with anybody else who does. You do have the ability to add to your agenda. Like you open the meeting and then the next thing immediately you do is you have a discussion about adding to your agenda if items need to be moved. If you, you know, that, you know, sometimes like, oh, yeah, we don't want to pay Dina to sit here for four hours, so let's move Dina to like the first thing even before public comment. You know, sometimes that happens. Or you have to move things around, you know, maybe somebody's scheduled. But you can add to the agenda. That being said, the advice has always been, and the limitation is this, because you have to look at it through the eyes of that you are a public body and that there is a, that the work that you do, the public has a right to be informed of, generally speaking. You have very limited bases for having discussions outside of public being involved. And so adding to an agenda something that is a significant issue, I would say to you, I would not believe is appropriate to do. And I think that opens you up to having people complain, especially if you make a pattern of doing it, that people will complain that you're violating the open meeting law and you're not noticing your meetings appropriately, if you have to keep modifying and adding to your agenda at the beginning of a meeting. If you are going to, for what I would say are sort of benign sort of things of, hey, we'd like to add that, hey, Dina popped in because, you know, at 4:35, an issue came up and we'd like to have, we'd like to have the ability to have Dina address this issue. Again, I'm a little cautious about it because typically I discuss with you stuff in executive session. But if you're going to add, say, something like me, and it's pretty benign, and we understand that I would normally be in executive session anyhow, which would preclude public participation, then your board should be having a conversation about and a vote on whether or not to add that to the agenda. And if somebody doesn't like that idea and thinks that that's just like kind of dirty pool for me to be popping in because something happened at 4:30, then they can vote that way. So I don't know if that answers everything. I would say to you, your policy does not, your policy is not going to trump state law, but I'm also going to tell you that you're going to open yourself up to problems if you add to your agenda a lot and if you add things that are significant. If you are in budget season and you decide to add stuff to your agenda, I have to tell you, I know that you have multiple meetings. And so, again, the same way, I don't think it rises to the level of an emergency meeting. Typically, if we're talking about budgetary issues, then I'm not so sure it rises to the level of adding to your agenda. That's how I would view it, Lori.
Okay.
I'm not a huge fan of adding to agendas. And sometimes I ask superintendents, hey, you know, can you put on an executive session and I'll come talk to your board tonight? And I get, no, Dina, I'm not good and comfortable with that. And I roll with it, and I think that's fair to tell me that they're not comfortable with it. Or the board chair says to me, you know, if Dina, why don't we see if we can't just do a special meeting in two days and get a forum to show up and you can talk to them then? I've had that happen, too.
Okay, I have a follow-up now because Lori was talking about me.
Okay.
First, it seems like you split the baby. You said it's legal to do, but you're not happy with it. So is that the correct interpretation?
I think, yeah, I mean, what I would say is that there, it does, the statute does, you can do it, there is a provision to do it. I'm saying to you, I wouldn't invoke it a lot.
Okay. And then I'm going to tell you the reason that I did it. It's because there's been a repeated history, I believe, of Lori denying requests to put things on the agenda or saying, okay, it'll be on the agenda six months from now. So can you talk about what the chair's obligations are when asked by a member of board to put something on an agenda?
Hey, I think that there should be consideration, too, if somebody wants stuff that's on, put on the agenda. I think, I think I feel uncomfortable, and I think that's great that you made me feel uncomfortable. And I'm okay with it. So, you know, I did not realize that it was, I probably should have realized that there was some level here. I think that board chairs do determine what agendas are, but I also do think that, and you're asking me a question when I don't know the topic of what you're asking about. And I do think sometimes the topic of what you're asking about has implications. So generally speaking, I think that overall, a board chair should contemplate when a board member says, I'd like to have something placed on the agenda of, and have an open and transparent discussion of the relevance of what's going on in the meeting and whether or not it could be held off to the next meeting, whether or not it's something that should, you know, that, yeah. I just think that there should be that conversation and there should be, I think, due consideration provided. But I also do think that it does depend on, I think when things get placed on and when things need to be put on agendas and what concerns are, I think the topic has a relevance to when that, what the immediacy is of putting it on an agenda.
Okay, I'm going to ask another follow-up question.
And I don't, and I'm not sure who's talking, so I don't. And I don't know, I don't know if that answers that for you.
I'm not happy with the answer. I don't think it was adequate.
You what?
I don't think the answer was adequate, honestly, but. So my follow-up to that is, if you've got, you said a situation where the board chair says, wow, I don't think this is appropriate, or this isn't part of what the regular meeting's supposed to be about, or, you know, I just think this is a really bad idea. So no, I'm not going to put it on the agenda. And you just said that making a motion in the meeting to put something on the agenda is inadvisable and it should be a prejudice against doing so. What recourse does a board member have to put things on the agenda that are important to them?
So before you go ahead and answer that, first of all, some of this is old news. And that, and the only reason I say that is because some of the things that you're saying that took six months are because you were not here at meetings there for a time, or we dealt with the items that you wanted to talk about, but you weren't here, and then you wanted to put them back on the agenda again. So I just wanted to make that note. The other thing is, is that in recent history, meaning the last year or so, nine times out of 10, if someone wants to put something on the agenda, and probably more 10 out of 10, we have put it on the agenda for the next meeting. And I would be open to anybody else being here that are board members to tell me that that is not the case. I will say to you, Kevin, also, that you like to hijack the meeting by adding things at the beginning of the meeting instead of asking me to put things on the agenda. And there are times that you have asked me in the last year, and I have put things on the agenda for you.
That's still, question's still out there, please.
So what recourse do you have? Well, on an annual basis, you do decide on who's going to be your board chair. That's one. Two, I think that if your fellow board members have the same concern as you, and, you know, if you don't get together as a forum, but, you know, if you individually decide that you have that issue, then I think as a board, you're going to have that discussion. And there's going to be that pressure put on your board chair to put things, to either address it, put things on the agenda, or not put things on the agenda. I do think, it's concerning to me that there's some animus. And I understand, I haven't been at your meetings, so that's a little concerning to me about doing that. I'm giving you an answer of, that is a very broad answer. And I'm doing so on purpose because I don't know all the specifics. Lori, or Kev, I think, you said it was Kevin you were talking to. I don't know all the specifics of it. So I am giving you a very broad answer on it. I think, I think that if it's something that has been brought forward, that it's been discussed by the board, and the response is that, quite frankly, you don't like what the answer is, I'm not sure that there's validity in bringing it back to the board on an ongoing basis. Maybe there is. But generally speaking, if you've had the discussion at one time with the board and the board doesn't want to take that path, I'm not sure that it's effective use of board time to keep revisiting those issues. If that's something you strongly feel about, then I think it is having them one-on-one conversations with, perhaps with other board members about what you, what your concern is about, whatever the subject matter is. I think it's a balancing act, and I think it is an act of being efficient, addressing those things that need to be addressed for operating and maintaining and moving forward, something which, while it is all about kids and it's all about educating kids, but has some business necessity to it. And I know nobody ever wants to refer to it as a business, but there is business necessity of being efficient and addressing issues to do it. I think that you guys maybe should have a conversation about what the, I don't know, maybe about what the goals and what you all need to want to address as a board. And that probably also is not a sufficient answer for you, Kevin, and I get it. I am generally saying to you, I think when I look at things from an open meeting law perspective and from an understanding that while it is a meeting of the board, and I represent boards, and I represent school districts, I should say, and boards are the entity that run the school district, that I have to look at it, that the ongoing addition to things on an agenda, I think does deprive the public of knowing what the board is talking about. And I think that provides some exposure, depending on what the subject matter is. And I could tell you I'm going to be more sensitive and concerned about monetary issues like budgetary issues, if those are the things that keep being added. That's how I'm going to look at it because I think the citizens are going to be concerned about the financial implications and want to be involved in that discussion or have the knowledge that that discussion is happening sometimes.
We also do have, on our agenda, going forward, it's even on this agenda at the bottom, that there are other, you know, for people to bring up other items for discussion for future agendas, or for future discussion. So we did that so that everyone would have the ability to do it at a meeting. I know some things come up, you know, in between meetings that people want to talk about. So, but anyway. Brett, do you have a question or something to say?
Well, I was going to ask Dina a question because when we first started talking about this, she made the comment, that's interesting, referring to our policy. And I can understand where the policy being in somewhat disagreement with state law could be a little bit, maybe leading towards causing a little bit of tension. Do you think that, in your opinion, should we, should we revisit the policy or?
I haven't looked at your policy. I think, I think that boards can, I haven't looked at it. I mean, I don't know if you need to revisit it. I just, in my brain, I don't think that I have, maybe I do have clients that have policies like that. I'd have to look. So I can't answer that, Brett. In other words, like until I read the policy, I think maybe you guys should have a discussion about what works and doesn't work. Sorry. They haven't had dinner yet. Of what works and what doesn't work for you all in terms of notice. Clearly, that notice to put it on the agenda has to be at least, it's going to have to be at least 48 hours before your meeting. I don't know when Renee's office puts out, pushes out the agenda. I suspect, if I go back and look at my email, I know I got one from Melinda, and that's probably when she pushed it out, and that was more than 48 hours before this meeting. So I don't, you know, so in order to get it on an agenda, really, I think you do, by how it's processed already, have to do more than 48 hours. All right. I will say this before I mute again and then go kill my dogs. I'm kidding, I'm not going to kill my dogs. That if you want to send me the policy, Lori, I'll take a look at it. And I can look around and see if other people have it. I also think that honestly, it could be a discussion of, I don't know if there's, if you know any of the other board chairs that are in the area around you, have a discussion with them about how they manage that out, too.
Sure, okay. All right, well, other than that, anyone else have questions for Dina? All right, well, Dina, thank you very much for spending time with us tonight. We really appreciate you. You know that, I hope you know that.
No, I do, I do know that, and thank you. And I'm happy to do this. I'll check into that one question and send that to you and Renee. I do want to turn out there for you, and Renee gets points for this because he grabbed me by the back of my shirt when I told him, and he signed me up immediately when I said to him, you know, historically, Renee, I've done a training for you guys for free and because, you know, I've represented for a long time. And we have that relationship. And so Renee said, spore, I know what we're going to do. So thank you for having me here.
Thank you for being here. All right, bye. All right, so that was the beginning of our retreat. All right, so the next thing on our agenda is to review Global Ends Policy 1.0 and PG Policies. You have the policy, or you all should have the policies in electronic format. What we want to do is review the ends for currents, you know, if they're current and if they're appropriate. And then we also want to review the monitoring process for '23 and '24, which should be in your board packet. But let's start with the first one. So let's review, so it's Policy 1.0 that is in your, do you have it there right there? Yes. Yes, it should be in your supplemental documents.
It's page 21.
Okay, thank you, yes. So I don't have to hear myself talk. Does anybody else want to read it so that everybody can hear it? Because it's very hard to be visual and audio at the same time. Brandon, please, help me out. Just read the first one.
Okay, I'll do that. The first policy?
It's 1.0, yep. The first one.
"The Board Will Govern Lawfully, Observing the Principles of the Policy Governance Model With an Emphasis on..."
I think he's reading the wrong thing.
An outward, is that, am I reading the wrong thing?
Maybe it's the right one.
It's that one, isn't it?
It says, I'll read that for you.
Yeah, read that one.
"The Honor Valley UU School District Exists So That All Enrolled Students Are Empowered With the Knowledge, Skills, and Attributes Needed To Be Successful and Contributing Citizens of Global Society By Way of the Resources Invested by the Communities. We Accomplish This By Empowering Students In the Following Ends As Reported Out in Grades 2, 6, 8, and 12."
Okay.
I can keep reading if you want.
Oh, yeah, go right ahead.
Excuse me, where are we now?
You're, we're on ends. We're on page, you said it was page 21? It's not page 21?
Yeah, I don't.
It's on the agenda if you click on the, there's a link.
It's always a maze.
Oh, OVU PG Policies?
Yeah, OVU UPG Policies. And it would be the very first one. It says, the top will say ends.
We'll talk about the PG 13.
Yeah, right? Do you have it now?
It's not under the
Okay.
I can show you where.
Yeah, show me where.
Natalie, have you been able to find it?
No.
No? Okay. Paul, did you find it? Okay, excellent. I'm just making sure.
It's on the agenda. Okay, it's linked to the agenda. Got it.
All right, linked to the agenda. Yes, it's all linked to the agenda.
Okay, got it.
So if you're on the agenda, you should be able to link it to. Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, like the
Yeah, it's right next to where the, it says, it's in apostrophes, OVU U.
It's a link on the agenda.
Yeah, click that.
It's not under supplemental.
Were you able to find it?
There it is, thank you.
Yes, this is the agenda. I can't read without my glasses, sorry.
You go down midway.
Yeah, okay. Okay, everybody else up? Should be the very first page. Or well, after that.
I got it.
Okay, we're good. All right.
Okay. 1.1, academic proficiency. A, students understand essential concepts in academic domains and apply this knowledge in authentic situations. B, students ask questions effectively to acquire knowledge. C, students acknowledge their growth and identify possibilities for continued learning. 1.2, communication. A, students communicate effectively using oral, written, and nonverbal body language (in parentheses) strategies. B, students communicate through a variety of media and create a positive digital footprint. C, students take into consideration multiple points of view. And 1.3, critical thinking and problem solving. A, students use inquiry to solve real-world problems with innovation, creativity, and curiosity. B, students participate in a collaborative problem-solving and decision-making process. C, students evaluate information critically. 1.4, global citizenship. A, students recognize that our world is increasingly complex and interdependent. B, students understand and exercise their rights and responsibilities within a democratic society. And C, students study a non-native language and understand the importance of learning about other cultures. And 1.5, learner agency. A, students take ownership of their own learning. B, students develop their own voice and the ability to use it in a variety of settings. C, students have high expectations for themselves and see themselves as lifelong learners. And lastly, 1.6, well-being. A, students develop strategies and interpersonal skills to manage stress, promote mental health, and cultivate positive relationships. And B, students recognize the value of healthy behaviors and physical activity in promoting health, enjoyment, self-expression, and social interaction. And C, students have the knowledge necessary to make financially responsible decisions that are integral to their everyday lives. The end.
Thank you. So this ends has morphed out from a one sentence at the top that you see right there into all of these different sections, because what we want to be able to do is monitor that this is what our kids are able to do by the time, for Honor Valley anyway, that by the time they graduate, that they have these attributes. So the question is, I believe from what I'm reading here, is to make sure that they're still relevant and appropriate for this next school year.
If I may, I'd like to ask the superintendent to weigh in, because superintendent's job is to, is to achieve the global ends, and whether he thinks these are good, whether in the right order of priority, what needs to be emphasized, those sorts of things I'd like to, I think it would be valuable to the board to hear his, his thoughts.
Thank you. I think that they are highly appropriate for what we need to accomplish within our supervisor union and within our respective districts. I do have a question, though. The last sentence of 1.0 says that it's reported out in grades two, six, eight, and 12. And so are those considered benchmark grades? And those are the grades that get reported on annually? Or are those the only grades that get reported on period? How does that, what, what is the expectation of the board?
So we fought over that sentence a lot the last time we did this. So it's funny that you asked the question. But essentially, those were benchmark grades. We felt that, you know, after grade two, that's when kids should be able to read, and so that they're not learning to read anymore, they are now reading to learn after grade two. So that was one of the benchmarks was grade two. And then we also did six, eight, and 12, just because at the end of sixth grade, they're done elementary school, eighth grade because of middle, and then 12 because they're off on their next adventure.
Okay.
So again, and that would be your interpretation as to what that exactly means.
Okay. If there was anything, and I may just do it anyway, even though you're not, it's not written in policy, I think nine is a really important grade, too.
Okay.
And so, because that transition from eight to nine, maybe not so much here, given that it's a middle-high school, but historically around the country, when you have a separate middle school and a separate high school, that initial year that you have separated from the middle school ages is really challenging for a lot of students. And I think, given that our VT cap, our last year that is, it's tested for English and math, is ninth grade, I think it's appropriate that we would either include it in a written-out fashion, or we just, I'll just include it because I think it's incredibly important.
I would, I would agree, and I would say replacing eight with nine even, because I now have my third ninth grader going into ninth grade, and I feel like this is a really critical time. Well, how they do in ninth grade is, is pretty important. I've seen them struggle more there than in eighth grade.
How does the rest of the board feel?
Fine with me.
So are you making that motion to change the wording from two, six, eight, and 12 to two, six, nine, and 12?
Yes.
I'll second.
Okay. Other discussion?
Yeah. So I, although I appreciate the idea of looking at grade two, I would try to veer from the idea that kids change from learning to read to reading to learn, because the information we have currently is that we're learning to read constantly, and it doesn't end at grade two. So I just would want to make that distinction. I think that for the same reason where the disparity begins for those kids who haven't mastered reading skills is third grade. But that's, you know, that's neither here nor there. I mean, what does it mean reporting out versus what, how they're actually doing? It doesn't, doesn't change what we do.
Sure.
It just gives us an idea of how we do. But just, I would like to clarify that as we think about younger children.
What is your thought on that, Renee?
I, I like three. I would also like to keep eight if possible, because if we, if we eliminate eight, then we have no grade where we're measuring science.
Okay. So do you, so you can do a friendly amendment, if Kevin is amenable to it, to keep eight, add nine, and change two to three.
Is that a lot of reporting out?
No, I mean, we're already, we're already doing it anyway, and I'm going to report out on all the grades anyway, so, but if these are going to be the benchmark grades, then it'd be great if we have the ability to, to, do you want to comment, Debbie?
If that's okay, I think that three is a good idea, because math in third grade as well, because you were speaking to reading. In third grade, I think that, third grade is a huge indicator for math for an elementary school as well, so I think that that makes sense.
And my, one of my kids couldn't read in second grade. But is fluid now, you know?
Right, third grade is a huge year where we can scoop up a lot of kiddos in third grade.
Yeah.
So are you okay?
Yeah, I'm okay with amending that to three, six, eight, nine, and 12.
And Kevin, are you okay with that?
Absolutely.
Okay, just checking.
And it kind of makes sense, because fifth grade is sort of a big year in math, but just like with the reading piece, they can sort of scoop up those lagging skills in sixth grade from the end of fifth grade math, if that's lagging.
And I guess I'm thinking the purpose of reporting out, right, is to take action? So once we see how things are going, that informs how you should tweak going on. So those years are important for that reason, right?
Yes, those, those grades will help us certainly with 1.1. And so we're going to have to develop other ways of measuring the other global ends, because these are not as easily measured, but they're equally important. So we need to make sure, not just as the central office team, but in tandem with the administrators and, and other members of the school district in finding out ways, and with the students, too, because they're the, really going to be the best way of telling us, are they actually taking ownership of your own learning? Because we can't tell them, "This is how you do it," because people do it differently. And the same thing with well-being. We may say that this is the best way to manage stress, but maybe not for them. So it's going to be really important for us to, to listen to our students.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All of those in favor of the friendly amendment that would change ends policy 1.0 to now reflect grades three, six, eight, nine, and 12? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All those opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, passage unanimously. Okay, let's see. And then, review monitoring process for 2023.
Oh, I've got another thing about the ends.
Oh, you did? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, so we could do this for endless hours. You know, one of, one of the, I'll just get straight this. Academic proficiency 1.1A. It's badly written, and it also implies that there's a, that academic domains are somehow inauthentic situations, which isn't true, and it's overly complex. I would propose, I would move that 1.1A, change to read, "Students learn to understand and apply essential concepts," period.
Wait a minute, I'm writing this, so you have to give me a minute. Students, students learn to understand what?
Essential concepts.
Okay.
Sorry. "Students learn to understand and apply essential concepts."
Okay.
Period.
Be on academic domains, is that what you're thinking?
And the rest of it is okay?
No, the rest of it should go.
Oh, you just want, that's all you wanted to say?
Well, it shouldn't be the essential academic, what kind of concepts? I feel like that's really broad.
Well, we teach a bunch of different things, I mean.
We're only talking about academics here, though, right? This is academic proficiency.
Right, 1.1 is really just talking about academic proficiency.
Okay. So students, I'll amend it then. "Students, I don't know if we even need to learn to, understand and apply essential academic concepts," period.
And then those, are those measurable?
Yes.
And you're taking out the authentic situations?
Yeah, I'm taking out domains, authentic situations, all that, yeah.
But the essential, the authentic situation was, I think, the idea of application, right? So I'm just trying to figure out how.
Well, before we discuss it, we need to know if someone wants to second it, because he did make the motion. Okay. All right, now ask your question. Well, you've already asked it, but.
You'd ask it again?
Yes, that I think that the point this is making was to take the academic knowledge and apply it in real-life situations. That's the, the idea of the proficiency. I think that this is looking at, I might need.
Yeah, I'm saying that that's a false distinction.
And you're saying that, right.
And that, and that further implies that academic knowledge is somehow unrelated to the world.
Got it. But I, I'm trying to, to understand your motivation for taking the authentic situations out. And the fact is that the way that we measure it is not necessarily in authentic situations, but in tests. That's what we end up reporting out.
Well, I, I'm saying, life is an authentic situation, so, okay. "Students understand to apply it," the word "application" implies in all sorts of, yeah.
1.3A also really establishes that they need to be able to do these things through inquiry in real-world problems.
It's okay to take out the authentic situations, I'm not against it, I'm just, was just trying to see your motivation.
I didn't like that phrase anyways.
So it sounds like we're simplifying it.
Yes.
Sounds like it, yes, yeah. All right, so what I have here, is there any other discussion? Okay, so what I have here is changing 1.1A to say, "Students learn to understand and apply essential academic concepts."
Yes.
Is that what you had? Okay, that's what I have. Okay, so all those in favor of changing it to that, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those against? Abstentions? Were there any others on our PG ends? Okay. All right.
Are we looking at executive limitations?
So it just says, "Discuss how board policies will be monitored going forward." So if you click the link that says, "Review monitoring process for 2324," do you mind putting that up on the, I'm sorry?
Where are we now? Okay.
So essentially, these are the dates and what we reviewed, right? Okay. Go back to, okay, yeah, okay. Review monitoring process for 2324. Discuss how board policies will be monitored going forward. I believe in discussion, so what we try to do for board, board monitoring, are we talking about our policies or executive limitations?
That's what it is.
I'm just curious, because.
I think it's where
Is that for you?
The board checks to make sure that I've created an interpretation for the ends, for a specific end, and I present out to you evidence of that interpretation, and you either approve of it, ask for more, or say that was completely and totally wrong.
Right, so that's the executive limitations. So I just got confused whether we were monitoring our own processes here, meaning three and four policies, or whether we're talking about your two policies, so.
So these are on twice for our consideration at first, and then our approval second time around, is that correct?
So the way it's supposed to work, actually, which we hadn't been doing, I don't know when it changed, but the idea was, is that at the first, at one meeting, he would present what he thought the policy meant to him, okay? He would, and then at the second meeting, he would provide, after we've had a chance to look at his interpretation, and if those seem reasonable, then he would present all of his
Data.
Data and stuff at the next meeting. So what had been, what had happened in the last few years is that you got the whole thing all at once.
Okay.
I like it in parts.
You like it in parts? Pieces and parts? Yeah, okay.
And there's a third round for at least some of them? 2.6 comes up three times? Like, I don't know, maybe they all do. 2.6 comes up three times, like, I don't know, maybe they all do. What's the third?
Oh, well, if you look at the dates, I think if you're looking at dates, you'll see it happens once a year. It should, anyway. 2.6 should be, one should have happened in '21, one in '22, one in '23, possibly one in '24 already.
Okay, got it.
Okay, that's why you see it. So she has it all, you know, it's a running.
Yep, got it.
Excel spreadsheet. Okay. So, and then on the work plan, I believe, down below, Melinda has put in where those executive limitations will come in through this next year, because what we want to do is make it more convenient for Renee to be able to do the policy for all three boards, instead of trying to do 2.6 for us, and 2.9 for Barstow, and 2.3 for RNESU. So.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And we had talked at some point that some of these policies impact other decisions we make and that we should be, you know, that some should come sooner than others. Do you remember this?
So they have been moved around mainly by Deb Zingizer at Barstow, because she, she wanted to move things around to make it easier for Renee. Some of them, he wouldn't have had enough chance to have any data for, so they have been moved out. Some of the things he would already know have been pulled forward, but yes. And so, and at that time, if we don't like his interpretation, or we don't like whatever, then that's when we can change the policy, if we wanted to. Okay? Or ask for more information, or whatever. Okay? And I believe we did look at all 10 executive limitations last year. And the next one would be coming up at our first meeting in September. Is everybody okay with that?
Are we voting on this?
It's not really, I think it's just a discussion, review kind of thing. There's really none. Okay. So, with that, we're going to move into our boardwork priorities. And essentially, our priorities from last year were the ones from the year before, I think. We wanted professional development for the board, we wanted to monitor our policies. Will we do that anyway? We wanted policy governance, professional development in board meetings, or maybe you do, maybe you don't.
We're to the top of the supplemental documents now?
Oh, no, you are, well, you're at, I'm back at the agenda, sorry. I'm looking at the agenda, because Melinda was nice enough to bullet point out things that we want, needed to talk about. Did you see it?
Yep.
Okay. So, um, let's see, sorry, I'm not wearing my glasses. Pursue facility options, and then ensure board member participation and discussion. So those were our, we wanted, need to reflect on that, and then we need to decide what our priorities are for '24 and '25.
On number one, didn't we eliminate the funding for that?
We sure did, but there are free things, like Dina was free tonight, as she indicated. And VSBA also has a lot of free stuff that we could do. So, yeah, so there are, there's still board development that we can do.
Can we just make sure that this agenda says 2023-24? We're looking at 24-25, right?
Um, so, it says 2023-24, because those were our priorities last year, we were reflecting on whether or not we did them. And then we will set the priorities for this year.
Got it, got it.
Yeah, no problem.
I feel like one and two, three are similar.
One, two, and three, or one and?
One and three.
They probably are. I mean, I think she pulled out policy governance specifically because we have new board members, and because this is Renee's first year in working with policy governance. So it might make sense to have some policy governance discussions, or.
It could be part of our professional development.
Yes, it can be, yep.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with that, Mary, that's the focus of the professional governance.
Well, so that, that just means that when we're setting our priorities for this year, that we just talk about professional development, and we don't pull out policy governancees specifically.
I was thinking the opposite.
Or vice versa, however you want it.
I would just say professional development for the board, including policy governance.
Yep, okay. So that's a priority you want for '24 and '25, correct? And we can try to do this together.
Yeah, that's okay.
Because I think some of this is, is going to be, like, the facility options, that is a carryover. It's gonna be a carryover. If we're gonna continue to talk about middle school.
I think we need to. Isn't that a priority that?
Oh, I think so, but I'm just saying.
Michael put as a priority.
So, facility options, both of those are gonna be a carryover. On board development. Including, including PG. Okay. Monitoring of policies, I, I'm not sure that that needs to be a priority. That is something that we do at every meeting.
Yeah.
And I don't know that it needs to be carried forward, it's just a given. Because it's on our work plan. And the last one is, "Ensure board member participation and discussion."
Do you know why we made that a priority?
Nope.
It's impossible to enforce anyway.
Well, right. I think we, I think.
Well, I think maybe had to do with our open spots, but we didn't.
We don't have that many open spots at the beginning of the year, I don't know. We don't need to carry it forward. Okay. All right. So we're carrying forward the facility options and the board development, including policy governance. And then, we're eliminating the monitoring reports because we already do that anyway, that happens every month. And the others, right, and then the ensure board member participation, well, you all know you're supposed to be here. So, yeah.
No, no, wrong. I was thinking that this was participating in school, you know, in, in community and activities, but that's.
That, that's gonna come later.
Okay, okay.
That's coming later. All right, are there any other priorities that we have not discussed that we're, you know, that aren't carried over that we need to be thinking about moving forward?
Yes. I guess my frustrations with the board are, are out in the open now, and I would just point out to the new members that four out of the five priorities in 2023 and 2024 were inward gazing, navel gazing of the board, talking about itself. That is really not why you're here, and not what we should be doing. We need to have priorities such as looking at how our students are recovering from the COVID drop-off in, in their abilities and mental health, looking at ways in which we can develop the reputation of our schools to be, so that they're more well-respected, looking at things like, as I, first thing I said tonight, is the upward mobility of poor students. We, we, we spend so much time talking about our policies and about, about the board's functions, that we don't talk about the essential things we have to do. And, and personally, I mean, this is my sixth year on this board, that's been a source of incredible frustration. I feel like we're treading water, we're not doing what we need to do to improve the lives of our children, and I don't know how to phrase that, it's a policy priority, but that's the, that's the essential work of the school board. So, yeah, I'd like to.
So, what are these, these, I feel like these aren't really what we, I thought we had communication with the community.
Well, that was one of the, I think so. This was Melinda trying to pull it out from last year. And I, so, but yes, community linkage is always one of them. And I think that's something that we have to do this year, especially since we had three, well, we had two budget defeats before we were finally able to pass a budget. These are trying times, as we know, I mean, especially with the inflation and with just everything going on right now, people are feeling the pinch.
Yeah, so I was gonna add that maybe, you know, finances should be one of our priorities. And just making sure that we're reviewing them and being open with the public and letting them know that we're not nickel-and-diming them.
Yeah, public engagement in finance discussions.
Well, so, when you talk finance discussions, you also have to realize that that's his purview.
Well, right, and this is where I'm trying to feel, so, some of these things like wellness and health and well-being of students, it's not our job to work on that. It's our job to monitor it.
And give the resources.
Reports from the superintendent to know how it's going, but we don't choose how that's done, right?
I think we should, I think it's, I think it's a policy discussion.
But I think, so, so I'm, don't want to interrupt.
Right, I mean, but our job isn't to decide how that's done.
No, but I think when we look at policy monitoring and we go one by one with all of them, we lose focus of concentrated efforts on, on some of the policies. Instead of trying to do all of them, if we prioritize which ones are the ones we want to hear most about, because those are the ones that are impacting these things that we're talking about, wellness, you know, engagement, et cetera, then maybe that will make us more effective at having deeper conversations about certain policies and not try to go through all the policies in a year. You know, it just feels, it does feel somewhat perfunctory to just do this policy, and then that policy, and then that policy, and we don't ever get deep. So, maybe it's focusing on fewer policies. I don't know if that's possible. I don't know enough about policy governance myself.
So that's kind of what I was thinking, I was looking at, you know, our executive, the monitoring reports, and so, financial conditions and activities, maybe we should focus on that one, and get more feedback on, I don't know, just as, as a, or treatment of staff. Do we need to hear more about how our staff are doing? Why do we have such a huge turnover? Why is it so hard to hire people? Like, what are the, what are the issues that schools are facing right now? I feel like that's a big one. And so, do we focus it on what we're, what we have here and pick just a few of those as our priority? Because we have to follow policy governance, right?
I hear her saying the similar things, you know, which is okay to do policies, but maybe fewer policies. And I don't, is there a, is there a regulation that says that we have to annually review all the policies?
Well, that's what we have been doing.
Yes.
There, you could slow it down and do, you know, do it over a two-year span, however, that means that there could be a policy that takes two years to get back to. So, the, I think what might be important is that you, we could look at the policies and say which ones we think are the most important, but I don't know that we will change the, how, I don't see that we are going to change in what order they come in, because we want to stay with BUU and RNESU. So, although we may think that staff is the most important, let's say, it may be fiscal responsibility first, and he hasn't had enough time to, you know, to have sat down with staff and understand staff to be able to do his monitoring report on staff yet. That might be something I would expect, maybe in March, or maybe in January, or February, somewhere in there, you know, just before we get ready to, you know, whatever.
Well, that, I mean, that makes sense, but maybe some of these perfunctory things that we go through, we just go through them, and we don't spend any time on it, but on the things that we want more information on, that's when we spend more time.
Right, so, yeah, so we could have more time with a, I mean, we don't have to do it the way we've done it, which essentially has been, here's the policy, here's the, yes, I'm in compliance, and you just bless it and you move on. That's why we're, that's why, you know, we open it up. We say, hey, do you have questions? Hey, you know, that's when you can get into the deep. Now, Brett has had his hand up there for a while, so I'm gonna open it up to him.
Good discussion, no problem. I don't really feel like talking anyway. I, I do feel it's important to say that I, I really think one of our priorities, and it's sort of in line with, I think, kind of what everyone's saying, although I'll be honest, I can't hear very well. I think we really need to evaluate the way that we handle the budget and make some changes. I, I feel like we rushed through parts of it, and then we're kind of, we're given incomplete information. I don't know, I think that should be something that we put an emphasis on this year, at least in my opinion.
I, I think we are, I think there's already been rumblings about that, but I'll, I'll ask you.
Well, Brendan and I, we've been talking about making sure that we start the conversation way earlier, because of the, and by, by conversation, we mean just starting to look at the number of students that we have. In fact, we're, we're beginning to engage with a demographer, hopefully fairly soon, so we can have a good idea of how many students that we have coming up through the system over the next five years and 10 years. Because it's really important for us to be making decisions based on the students that we will have available to us. But engaging with the community, I think I will be open to hearing from each of you and from others in the community about what's the best way for us to engage with how we go about communicating, because there, there are, we will have to conduct a strong needs assessment to figure out, especially if we're gonna go by the, by the global ends, we'll need to conduct a needs assessment to figure out, are we spending the money in the right places to get to accomplish the global, the global ends? And so, that's gonna be a discussion that we will have to have from the get-go, because we can't do it alone. Brendan, is there anything else you'd like to add?
No, I, I think, I take a little exception to say you did get enough information, Brett. I think that the legislature changed the rules on the street lines during the budget cycle, and that certainly had an effect on our ability to, to, to follow through on initial plans. We, you know, as you indicated, Lori, we, we lost budget twice, but even before that, we had reduced 400,000 from the budget before we came to the first draft. That was the key. So, I think, I think that we need more community input and community forums or conversations. And, you know, the first budget, the annual meeting had literally two people there and no conversations about what was in it, what wasn't in it, what our priorities were. As we lost budgets, we had more meaningful conversations with people through reach-out and through the, you know, the budget prep meetings, that I think were really valuable. And I found a lot of people came back and out of those meetings going, now I understand, oh, I didn't know that, or that makes sense. So, I think how we get our message out is, is something we have to work on, because we didn't do it exhaustively.
Yeah, I'm not really talking about anything early on in the cycle. My frustrations began, and it's really, I guess, not totally our fault, but it always seemed like we were rushing to pass something, specifically at the RNESU level, or even at the OBUU level, right, where we get numbers last minute, because the state gives them to us last minute, and we already have a meeting on the schedule, and we're trying to just get something done. And I don't know what the answer is, if it's, if it's another meeting or two that's right in that corridor after the numbers come out, before we have to have something passed, and maybe that's the answer, but it seems like every year, we're racing against the state to try to make a decision, and we don't have full numbers. And I understand a lot of it's out of our control, but there's gotta be something we can do to be better about having enough time to really talk and digest through this stuff when we actually have the real numbers.
Yeah.
That's on us, to meet more, I mean.
Well, yeah, I guess, we can always.
It's on us, but it's also on the state. I mean, I do remember literally coming to a meeting, you know, hours after the state had provided us updated information. And I feel your frustration, Brett, I, I've lived it. As we say, for the last five years, the crucial information from the state in regards to the number and how they're counting the weighted people, whatever definition it is, the previous year. and how they're counting the weighted people, whatever definition it is, the previous weighted people for the new long-term weighted average ADM, comes so late, and that is a pivotal number that equates into a, a property tax, or equates into what it means to a homeowner or to a taxpayer. And I don't know how to fix that. And then we're kind of crunched by printing deadlines and statutory requirements of when our budgets have to be adopted. So I hear your pain and frustration and share it.
Okay. So Renee, this would be bad career advice, so don't take it, but if you really want a lot of public input, you should announce we're gonna raise the budget by five million dollars, and then you'll get it. The kind of, because what we, we only usually get public input on, on a, on a large scale when people are upset. And unfortunately, that's, that's the case. So the, the other alternative is a, is a long-term cultivation of, we wanna speak to you, I will be available at such and such a place in time, may I come to the Chamber of Commerce meeting?
Don't forget select board meetings.
Select board meetings, which are, and Brandon lately are a lot of fun, too. It's, it's very, very difficult. You know all this already, but, you know, we had a, a perfect storm last year. Brendan's absolutely right about the state. We had a situation where the contracts had gone out, so we couldn't, we couldn't do any RIFs. We, we were getting told no. I think we were, frankly, I think we were lucky to pass it on the third try. I didn't think it was gonna pass. So some of it was just the circumstances of, of last year, but, but convincing people that their money's being spent wisely, I wish we could convince them to spend more. I mean, the building we're in is sixty-three years old in September. Lothrup's a hundred and twenty or something. Our, our kids deserve better, you know, we deserve better labs and all kinds of things. It, it's really tough. Sorry, I'm done.
Yeah, I just wanna, can we just, can we just move this along? Because we're not coming up with any solutions tonight. We're just coming up with the, the areas that we wanna focus on. And we could talk about all of these things, I'm sure.
Sure, Paul.
I have some areas, I guess.
Okay, good.
Can I add anything?
Yeah?
So I, I personally, I don't, I have a hard time with suspensions for kids. My things are kid-related. I think there should be a service work policy if you get in trouble in school. I don't think it's wise just to send a kid home. Maybe you got a shove from a kid. I get it, but now you're sending your child home that could be unsupervised, you're putting hardship on their parents, maybe having to miss work. You should be learning service work if you are going to act, behave in a manner you shouldn't. I'm a, just a big believer in that, so I'd like to take a look at that moving forward, some service work kind of. Plenty to be done around here. Extra hands always help. I, I don't know our hallway monitoring policy here. I think if there's adults that can, you know, pass a background test, things like that, they should be allowed to roam our hallways for adult presence, 'cause I have heard there's a lot of times there's no adults in the hallways here, and that's when things happen. It'd be like me being a coach and I'm out at the field, kids are acting. Yep, it's when you get there, they start to settle down. Adult presence, I think, is very important. There's a lot of amazing people in our community. Maybe with the right, you know, reaching out to them, they could give back to the kids that way. You know, I, Lothrup has like a grandparent, right?
Oh, yeah.
You know how come Otter Valley have grandparents, grandparent program? Why not? Why not teach young people how to, you know, be around our elderly, help take care of them, learn manners? I feel when you're doing good things and learning good things, you become a better person. I don't see that here. Those are things that I think are crucial to our kids.
So all of those are great things that should be told to Michael and the superintendent. It's not something, I mean, I, I, it's not that I'm saying that we shouldn't talk about it as a board. Maybe we talk about that during one of our policies, treatments of students. You know, that, that's where we might talk about that and say, can you, you know, why aren't we doing this for our kids? Why, why is it when we have a suspension, they have to leave school? Why don't we have a designated area so that, you know, it's actually a punishment and it's not a day off? You know, or whatever.
Still, you know.
Yeah, right, no, I, no, completely understand, but I, but those are things that are specific areas that we don't necessarily talk about, but are good discussions for the superintendent to know or to talk to Michael about and say, how do we do this? You know, I, I don't, you know, I don't wanna see kids suspended at home, 'cause now they're not learning. Instead, I'd rather them be here and, and cleaning toilets or something, 'cause we always could use janitors. So.
The fire station.
They're just service workers, yes.
Right, you know, anything.
And I, well, I guess go back to the schools, tech classes. I know it's a big, big discussion in here, and I am on board for trying to develop some more tech programs here. The world is constantly evolving and constantly getting remodeled. A lot of kids don't like to go the academic route, but maybe they're very thrifty with their hands, that kind of thing. There's not enough space south or north of us. We should find a way to introduce it right here and keep our kids here. Again, there's a lot of amazing people out there that could, you know, even if it's donated time or maybe a small budget for that to have them teach it. We, we are constantly remodeling, remodeling our plan, constantly. And we need people to fill that gap as we evolve. And if, I'm in that world, so you see the lack of it very heavily. It needs to be developed, it really does. We don't offer it much here, and that's bad. So I'm, I, that's one thing I, I am, we can talk about in this board.
Okay. So you would like to see more opportunities for kids, essentially, is what you're saying?
Yeah, certain kinds of opportunities, for sure.
I think it's, I mean, it's not just tech that isn't a lot for kids. There's other academic things for kids that are not offered here that, you know, would be beneficial for them as well. So, but, you know.
Career opportunities.
Right, career opportunities or whatever. Again, that, you know, that's something that we talked to Michael or to the superintendent about to see if we have space for that. I know, I'm sorry. It's just one, but it, but they're all great ideas, and I, I think I saw Renee writing down a bunch of them, so. You know, but, so when we're here at this board, we, we are looking, you know, we're kind of up above looking down. And we're just saying, hey, in, in the perfect world, we, you know, what is it that we need? And first of all, we do need the community linkage. And I think some of your ideas are great, because, you know, that's what people see. They say, oh, well, so-and-so got suspended and he was out for three days and, you know, was beating up the town of Brandon, or whatever. So that gives Otter Valley a bad name. We need to find ways to, to give Otter Valley a good name, and all of our other schools as well. I get that. Yeah, I know, sorry. We didn't turn the lights on, did we? I know, we're all have sleep now.
I, I can understand, I got that.
But, you know, you, you know, so, but, we do, you know, that's the, that's all that stuff in the end, you know? Are we providing our kids with all the things they need to be successful at that next stage in their life? And that doesn't just mean college, you know, it, it, we all know that. So, and I think that, you know, that, when we were kids, that's what was pushed, because college was so new. Now we need to, to go back and think about, you know, what is it that our kid, you know, what are the, if you look at every kid individually, what are their strengths? And what would they be able to do with those strengths? And let's tailor it to that. And I think there is a push towards that, but it's, you know, you have to start somewhere every year and, and, you know, they're starting that in the seventh and eighth grade, I believe, so with, I believe, there's a program, right? You know, the career day and all that stuff, yeah. So it's happening. It's just unfortunately, we're a slow-moving wheel. But, right.
Well, to put Paul's suggestions in policy terms, perhaps it would be good to have conversations with principals on a regular basis. On the pre-Act forty-six boards, and I go back to those, the principals, because they were individual boards for each school, the principals showed up at every meeting. And what we, what we had in the last post-Akt forty-six year is we tend to have principals come in once in a while, and they feel obligated to prepare a PowerPoint, and they give us a PowerPoint, and then the twenty-five minutes or so allocated for them is up and off they go. And we don't have the kind of conversations that Paul's suggesting and that, the kind of issues he's bringing up. I'd just like them, to have them be here and do a little talking face-to-face as opposed to having to waste, in my opinion, a lot of time building a PowerPoint that would take me forever and, you know, being distracted from the business of running their schools by, you know, what are the fifteen things I'm gonna tell the school board tonight? I just think conversation's more important, face-to-face conversation's most important of all.
I mean, I, I think PowerPoints could be shorter, but I think the information they provide is still very important. And they usually, they're usually bringing the information forward that we've asked them to bring forward, right?
Well, and you have to remember that the principals work for the superintendent, they don't work for us, so it makes it awkward for them to have a conversation with us and then bring up something that they might not have wanted to talk about in front of their boss, to us, or vice versa, you know?
But on, along the lines of, like, what Paul was saying, you know, maybe we have certain topics like behavior management and security, like broader discussions, so that, then we can talk about the more detailed nuances of what those might include.
Brendan?
During, when I first started, so I started late in my ninth grade year, but during the tenth, my tenth grade year, Padgett and I, the former student representative, we met with Mr. Ruppel. It was either monthly or, we met a couple times throughout the year, and that was helpful. And we came back and reported what we talked about. Like, it's not the exact same as having him face-to-face, but we were able to talk about issues that we deemed present within the school and for students predominantly, which again, isn't that same conversation as with the whole board, but was helpful. And then last year, we didn't meet with him, 'cause junior year takes up a lot of time. But I think this year, I, I don't wanna speak for Jasmine, but I think it's, that'd be a good idea to do that again. At least meet with him, get conversation rolling and then, yeah.
All right, so what I have for priorities for twenty-four, twenty-five are facility options, board development, which includes PG, community linkage, which also can include the budget and how to get the message out. I don't know if you want budget to be its own separate item, but it can be. But essentially, that's community linkage, and how do we get the message out and how do we get people to understand where our budget comes from? Other items that everyone else talked about, I feel are items that, you know, need to start at the school specifically and then morph out from there, or, you know, if you have a, a thought like that, you send it to the superintendent on your own and, and he can do what he wants with that. So, 'cause again, all of those things are, you know.
Don't CC everybody, though.
Right, well, that's true. You can't do that, so, you know, or have a discussion. But I mean, it's, I don't like the fact that kids are, are, you know, suspensions are out of school. But I'm told that there's no space here to, to have them within the building. So I don't know that, that's true. That's just what I, right.
Let's not discuss it, 'cause that's not what we're talking about.
Right, no, no, I know, but I'm just saying.
Yeah, so what.
Let's not discuss it.
I think the reason we don't have some of those things is because we don't have the resources for them and that we should be focusing on those resources as the board. So, like I said, staff, why are we lacking staff? Space, we don't have space. And I know, 'cause I have kids that have been suspended. And the only reason that my kid got to go to the fire department twice is because I had the time and the ability to do it. It's not that Michael doesn't disagree with that, but it's that who's gonna do it? Who's gonna, who's gonna go to the fire station? Who's gonna take them? So I would like to have on our priority list to talk about staffing, because I do feel like that's a.
So I actually think, from hearing from what everyone is saying, and Renee, you can agree or disagree, 'cause I would like your input on this, is that you're talking about things that you feel are important, and you are too, and that you think that there may be a, a monetary gap there, right? So when we're talking budget, maybe.
Maybe.
Maybe at our next meeting, in our first meeting in September, since we are gonna be talking about budgets early, is maybe we have the discussion about what we feel is important? And then we say to Renee, can we make it happen? Is that?
Thank you for, yeah, that's, that goes back to the idea of conducting a needs assessment, whether it's here, from the principals, from our data. Then, looking at our current systems and then looking at our finite resources. And if we can swing things with level funding, which means reallocation of things, fantastic. But if there is a greater need for certain things, then of course, we might have to reconfigure over time in order to achieve those ends. Because if we wanted to say we needed to do these other things, or just like we wanted us, we need to reconfigure the entire high school for whatever reason, or that would take a lot of money. If we did it over time, we could probably do it. But the, the same thing can be said with academics, the same thing could be said with interventions or social-emotional learning. We might have to, given that we have finite resources, we're gonna have to probably take a, a step-by-step way of doing things. But we also have to acknowledge that many of our students have an urgent need. And so, and many of our, our teachers and others have urgent needs, too. So we need to make sure that we're balancing our finite resources, our immediate needs, and our long-term goals. So that's why I think having that meeting in September is incredibly important, because it gives me a North Star from the board, and then I can go to others and I can say, this is what the board is saying is important. Here are the ends that we need to accomplish. This is the amount of money that we have. Can we do it?
Also, I would like to add that what are the creative ways we can accomplish some of these things without money, right? What are the programs that we can develop? A volunteer program, whatever it is. But it, it shouldn't just be about money, right? Like, let's think of, let's be creative.
Well, that can be part of the budget. I mean, discussion and being.
Let's be honest, we don't have a lot of money, so.
Well, it wouldn't necessarily be money, but it would be allocation of a personnel resource to manage a volunteer organization. So it'd have to be somebody's job on top of that in order to bring in volunteers, 'cause volunteers can't come in by themselves. And so it would have to be reallocation of somebody's time, which in essence does mean money.
Right, 'cause a volunteer can't be alone with a student, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
So we, have we set, separated budget out into its own category now?
Um, I have budget as its own category, which just is time to get the message out, but yes, it is separate.
Yeah, because I think subsuming it under outreach just waters it down and makes it disappear.
No, I do have it. I think we have to do community linkage for other things as well.
Yeah.
I mean, they have to know what we're doing in school, not just about our budget. I know at the end of the day, they're, they're looking at the numbers. But the more that they know what we're doing in schools and, you know, that we, we invite them to open houses or, you know, I mean, if you think about it, open houses usually are just for parents, but wouldn't it be nice to see community members there, seeing what our kids are doing? Wouldn't it be nice to see, I mean, the communities come out for plays? And we've invited them into the music when they, when they play the jazz band and all that stuff. And I've seen some community members come in for that. That's what they need to see. They need to see what our kids can do. And so maybe we also need to send our kids out with a person and show them what they can do out there, not just keep inviting in. But maybe our kids need to go out and, and find the community, too. So that's my community linkage speech. Okay, so.
I'm looking at the agenda, twenty minutes.
I'm looking at the agenda, twenty minutes left.
Oh, for our, oh, for, um, our retreat part? Well, I think we're actually pretty good here, because a lot of this is just information. Um, we've set our priorities for twenty-four, twenty-five, we have four of them.
Can you read them?
Uh, sure. So facility options, um, board development, including PG, community linkage, budget. Okay? Yeah.
Can I ask what, um, what does the facility options actually mean?
Oh, so one of the, so things that we have been thinking about in the past that kind of got killed by COVID was building a middle school. Well, it did. We've been talking about this middle school forever. And at one point, we were thinking about it being its own separate building out in the old football field. We have determined that probably the best idea is to build onto Otter Valley, or at least I think, that, at least that was the last discussion of the board before it kind of fell apart. Um, and so that's kind of stalled there, but that's what we're thinking of, so that we can have a true middle school model. Um, and it allows for some separation between the seventh and eighth graders, or seventh, eighth, ninth, or whatever, and the older kids, so.
In addition, facility options imply things like, uh, we've had many discussions about what to do with the Sudbury Building, for example.
Sure.
Lester School said some problems you probably know about, uh, as a, as a building, I mean. Paul alluded to the need for more tech equipment. As I mentioned, this building's getting pretty old and has some problems. So balancing all of those things, and where does the money go, and what, what order do we fix them in?
Yeah, I'm wondering if the, like, the boiler, the heating system falls under this, because I know.
Well, sure.
That my husband's been here, he's like, I'm, I'm freezing to death, I had to buy him a plug in, like.
Oh!
You know, to keep him, because he's like, it's fifty-something degrees in here, like, the boiler's not working, and it's like twice a year it goes down.
Oh, really? Okay.
And I'm just curious if that's eventually.
So, so we do have a facility plan, um, that's under the guise of, um, our, uh, facility manager, Rich Figu, and then Brenda is his supervisor, so they do have a plan. And so I'm not sure where Boiler is on that list, but I do know that it's there. And every year, we see a facility, um, at the end of summer projects, so I would suspect that Boiler might be on there at some point. Yes, ma'am?
I have a little question. Um, I know that last year, I think towards the end, we implemented modules, like, we started building them. Um, do you, I don't think any of them have started to be used. Do you know what I'm talking about?
Oh, the trailer.
Oh, the modulars, okay, you said, okay, I thought you said modules, and I was like, modules of what?
That's what Brendan told me it was called.
So modulars, so, um, we are actually using all three, or the third one will be in use, um, when school opens next week. So that's the one that's out behind Otter Valley.
Okay.
Um, and they finished it up this summer, so that'll be used. And the one, um, at, uh, Otter Creek Academy in Lester was opened at the beginning of the school year last year, and Neshabees has been open, um, not long after, mid-year last year. So they are, they are all being used, but those are only a five-year plan. So, um, that, that's what we told Brenda, I know. Did, oh, did we forget to tell you? Yeah, okay. Forgot to pass that information on.
They can figure out what to do.
Yeah, right, with them, or, yes, afterward, um.
And that's on the agenda, personally.
Yes.
No, I know what.
So, um, okay, community linkage, so what you'll see on the agenda after this is, um, actually just mainly information. Tells you all the open house dates, um, Otter Valley's having their open house Monday night, which is before school starts, but everybody's welcome to attend, three fifteen to five thirty. Then OCA and Lester's having theirs on September tenth, September seventeenth at six, to seven is Neshabees, and September twenty-fourth at six thirty is Lothrop's. And then there's also some school events on here. October twenty-fourth, um, from nine to eleven at Neshabees, they're having a grounds beautification and Neshabees conversation, so that sounds very interesting. And the twenty-fourth is Saturday, I think.
Yep.
Okay, um, September seventeenth from five thirty to six, Neshabees having a Title One Family and Caregiver informational meeting.
Right before the open house.
Right, okay, that's why it's only half an hour. Um, and on September twenty-fourth, which is also before the open house, at six o'clock, Lothrop is also having their family engagement meeting. So.
Can I ask a quick question? Are we all set with the Boys and Girls Club after-school program?
Yes.
Yes.
And it's happening where?
Neshabees and Lothrop.
The two places, okay.
Okay, no problem. All right, the next thing on our plan was determine board development needs. So, what do you, uh, what I need to know is what kind of board development do you want, so that then we can schedule it, and it needs to be free stuff, so. Well, I don't mean that, though, I mean, we could have someone from VSBA come in and do something on something, but I, I need to know, I guess I need to know when they could come in and teach us.
Yeah, that's true, and then I'm also, I would be happy to do development too.
Oh, well, there we go, all right, I'd be happy to see that. So, yeah, so can I bring that back to the next meeting?
Yeah, we talked about policy governance, whatever the VSBA has on that, since we're all kind of learning it together.
Yeah.
It'd also be, the, uh. The new, uh, school board standards go into effect next year, so it might be good to learn about those as well.
Yeah.
Okay, yep. Okay, um, and then finalize twenty-four, twenty-five work plan, that should be in your supplemental docs.
It is.
Consider dates, monitoring reports, schedule, um, community linkage opportunities. Barstow has already had their meeting, correct?
Correct.
All right, so the, um, schedule that you see there for, um, executive limitations or monitoring reports, we don't change those. For his benefit.
At least for this year.
At least for this year. But as far as dates, um, there's a couple dates that happen during school, um, during school vacation. If there's going to be enough, enough of us away, we could consider changing those dates, although we usually do that as we get closer, and it, it tends to be that we're able to have those meetings, even with people on vacation.
What does the, the red mean, sign anything in particular?
Uh, red, I got it.
I'm looking at the supplemental docs, school board work plan.
I'll look at yours, because I can't see further.
So the question about the red is what?
Does it mean anything in particular?
No, I think those were things that were on there from last year, she's just crossing them off, because, um. Let's see, what's that one say?
It says.
School transfer update. This one's. Okay, yeah, okay.
Haley trusts anyone who will be willing to.
See anything that's crossed out, it's just in red.
Yeah, they have asterisks next to them, too.
They do.
Well, everything has, almost everything has an asterisk.
All right, yeah, that's true. Okay, doesn't matter.
I think it's just, um, that may go there, it could be moved around possibly, so. Okay, so if you're all set with the work plan the way it is at this one, I mean, the work plan is the work plan, it can always be changed. But, um, if you don't see anything immediate that needs to be changed, then, um, I'm going, yes?
Just, just so you know, I won't be able to attend September seventeenth, I can make sure Chad's having a knee-replacing.
So, yeah. Okay. I didn't even via Zoom. Okay.
I want to be here.
I know, right, I know, we probably won't want to be here, what am I talking about? All right, well then, um, if you're okay with that, we are going to move over to our regular board meeting. Eight minutes early, I wanted to tell you, Renee.
That's lovely.
All right, so we're going to start our, um, regular board meeting. Communications of Parents, Citizens, and Staff is. Yes, please, good lord. Charlene? Charlene, have you met Renee?
No, I have not.
All right, so Renee, this is our board, uh, minute taker, she is phenomenal. And for those who else who do not know Charlene, that would be Lauren Thomas, she's from Brandon, and Jessica Markowski.
Hi.
Okay. All right, so is there anyone here online or, um, in the stands who would like to speak to us? Are you just taking, are you doing a? I was looking at you in the purple, I didn't know if you wanted to talk to us, or. That's, that's what I thought, but I wanted to make sure. No worries, no worries. All right, so seeing that there's no one here to speak to us, we're going to keep moving on. Um, consent agenda, can I get someone to make a motion?
I salute.
Amanda, is there a second?
My second.
Thank you, Jessica. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. I'm moving these down.
Oh, thank you.
All right, we're going to take one of those and pass it. Okay, perfect. So, and then, um, one thing I should have said for our new members is consent agendas are never specifically talked about. It's something that you see in the minutes, or in their supplemental docs. If you want to speak about it, when I say consent agenda, you would just ask for that letter to be taken off. So if you had wanted to talk about the monthly financials, you would have said, take off, I'd like to talk about C, and we would do that, okay? Otherwise, it's just something that, usually it's just, um, incidental information that we don't need to talk about as a board. Okay, so, moving on, presentation, brief overview of student assessment data. Renee, you're on.
Thank you. So, part of what I was hoping to be able to do, and we could either, you know, as part of a retreat, or just kind of putting, um, putting the ideas in your head as we move forward for monitoring, um, the global ends. I just wanted to make sure that you have access to our VT cap data. We'll be reporting out, uh, in a much bigger fashion, uh, this data, along with other information from our campus, or, I'm sorry, Continuous Improvement Plan, uh, at the September meeting, so that that way you, you'll be able to see, uh, where we are and where we hope to, where we hope to be by the end of the year. So, in this quick presentation, there's, really, we're just going to go through overall, uh, data from the entire district, as opposed to getting very specific. We'll talk about things by grade, uh, by subject, and also bring up attendance, because, uh, for me, that's something that I really want to be able to focus on over the course of this year, and I'll tell you about one of the things that we're planning on doing in September before our census date, uh, when we get there. So this is, um, what you see in front of you, um, this is our VT cap ELA, or English Language Arts data, from, these are the tests, uh, late last semester. And these are our proficiencies by grade level of the tested subject. So the blue and the green mean that the students performed at grade level or above grade level. The yellow is critically important. The yellow means that they are within one grade level. So they could literally be one month below grade level, but not considered proficient. So many of these kids, and you'll see that a lot of our kids are yellow, which is okay, because they're right there, they're within a year of being successful. So the way that I am taking these charts are that blue, green, and yellow are good. So the numbers that you see there are defined, are, are set by proficiency, and the way the state sees it, not proficient. So for example, third grade, the, because you can't see the little numbers, I added them together for you, so it's thirty-seven proficient, sixty-two, and so forth. So, um, I think it was important to see kind of the grade level progression, um, and as why I brought up the ninth grade earlier, to make sure that we're monitoring eight, nine, and three. So this is our ELA performance, and as you can see, in sixth grade, almost every one of our students is within, um, within one grade level of being proficient.
And Renee, that trend is a trend that shows across all of our data points as well.
And, uh, the other thing I would say is, as a state, there's always going to be that, something about fifth grade, uh, around the state where the scores have a tendency of, it could be that transition, because other, other districts have the transition of elementary to middle school, uh, in fourth grade. And some have it between fifth and sixth grade, and some have it between sixth and seventh grade. So in the districts where I've seen that they have a fourth and fifth grade separation, that's where kind of the, the big drop-off is, in the fifth grade.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Have you compared this data to data previous to COVID? Although it wasn't the V, it wasn't the VT cap, it was a different assessment.
So we recently put the Sback data into our, um, uh, into our, our data, uh, system. But the way that I ran these reports, I couldn't run them at the same time, so that'll be something that we talk about more in depth in September.
I'm just thinking of those third graders, right, those third graders were super impacted in the early years.
Brenda, that was really important, because one of the things that I love to do is talk about longitudinal data. Uh, so this is, it's, right now, this is just a comparison of how we did in twenty-two, twenty-three, compared to how we did in twenty-three, twenty-four, um, in ELA. So overall, we had thirty-nine percent in proficient in twenty-two, twenty-three, thirty-six percent proficient in twenty-three, twenty-four, but if you look at where the yellow is, we're basically the same. So all the kids are within that ballpark, and it's of course going to be our goal to make sure that the students are, are climbing up, um, that ladder.
Can you explain what the blue line means?
That's above proficiency.
Above that.
The blue line here, so on the first, on the first.
Are you talking about the, the horizontal line? The horizontal line?
So this one is, it's funny, I could only get it on this particular chart. So this, uh, this blue line refer, or the blue line on the grade levels shows you the difference from the previous year. I'm going crazy with my clicking, sorry. So if you look really closely, or maybe I can, I don't think I can blow it up, but each one of those grade levels has a plus or a minus, showing you, um, showing you not proficiency, but average scale score. So if you see on the right-hand side, you see the scale score number seventeen fifty is the passing scale score for every VT cap test. And on the left, the axis is percentage of students. So if you have a positive number, that means the average scale score for that test went up. If it has a negative scale score, a negative number, that means the average scale score went down a little bit from the previous year. Yes? Seven and eight were down more than just a little bit. Yeah, the thirty, the thirty, the negative thirty there, that's probably about two questions. That'll average out to about two questions. Scale scores are.
That's not percentage, that's scale score points.
Yeah, like, for the first one, it says seventeen.
So it's not like they're thirty-nine point six percent of those kids, it's, it's just thirty-nine point six points.
Yeah, so it's like, it's a, yeah, so it's a total of anywhere, I would say anywhere between two to three questions.
Yeah, yeah.
And scale scores are notorious and fickle, because they're essentially arbitrarily set by the, by the test provider.
Am I the only one distracted by the fact that the numbers don't equal a hundred sometimes?
It's, uh, yes, because sometimes they're ninety-nine percent, and sometimes they're one-on-one, and I would blame the rounding on, um, I'm going to blame it on the state.
There you go.
Oh, on, on your next slide, it's off by ten percent.
Oh, and that's probably my adding then.
I think the bottom number on the right should be a sixty-four, right?
No, 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 no.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Should be a sixty-four, because that's thirty-seven, thirty-seven and twenty-seven.
Yeah, that's sixty-four.
Yeah, so that's my adding problem, I will fix that. Um, here we are, this is the, uh, this is the ELA, we talked about this in a second, and I will fix that. Thank you for finding that. Okay, so our VT cap math, um, again here, so we are between, our scores in math, our proficiency levels are not as high as they are in ELA, so this is. So this is gonna be clearly an area of need that we will have to focus on this year as, as an institution. And so in some cases, you'll see that, um, yeah, it, on all but two of our grades, our scale score actually went up. So they were, that means that they're, the students actually did better this year, even though the proficiency numbers may have gone down here. But again, you'll see the yellow lines are pretty similar as, as from one year to the next. And for some reason, in a lot of the grades, the scale scores did actually go up. And so science is only tested in fifth, eighth, and eleventh grade. Uh, we, uh, this is probably the only one that I think we really are going to need to have a conversation about uh within eighth grade. We have a four percent who were considered proficient by the state. But again, additional seventy percent were within one grade level. Um, I have, um, I have some thoughts on this science test cuz I know, uh, I know of some really smart kids who took this test at the past couple of years, and they have a lot to say about it. So I, I will, I'm gonna have to look into the standards this year to find out exactly why the scores are so different from where they have been before.
I think this test is significantly different from the one before.
I think so too. And then here again, you'll see between twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-three, twenty-four, the proficiency numbers are very similar within the amount of error, and then also that the yellow lines, again, one grade level from being proficient, um, is very, very close as well. So overall, um, we have some work to do, but I think we're definitely in the ballpark. And so, uh, once we decide, once we compare this to our data, uh, and our needs under the continuous improvement plan, uh, we'll have a, a plan and some expectations laid out for you this coming year. Um, and that is part of the reasons why I keep bringing up this idea of a needs assessment, because if these are, and I would hope that, um, part of the global ends is for us to work on improving the outcomes from these scores, um, and improving the outcomes of beyond these, beyond the standardized tests. We'll have to look and see what we're doing currently to make sure that we're supporting our teachers and supporting our students in what they do every day, so that we can achieve, um, the global ends to our district satisfaction. Alright, and so this is our attendance. This is last year's attendance by grade. On the far left-hand side is our early childhood, so that's gonna be the three-year-olds. And then on the far right-hand side is our twelfth graders. So, you know, progressively, it gets worse as you get older. Uh, one of the things that, that, that we have, that we have planned for this year on September twenty-first, um, we know that we're gonna have some students who are already going to have attendance issues by that point. So the administrators are planning on doing home visits to each one of their students who have attendance issues, or for students who should've come back to school and haven't. Because we wanna make sure that if there's something that we can do as a school district to bring them back, or if they're having attendance issues, find out what the attendance issues are so that we have the ability to take care of them and come up with an intervention plan to help them and their family come to school on a more regular basis.
Can you speak to the yellow and the blue line?
Yes, um, the full-day attendance rate refers to, um, when you show up to school and there's a designated time that you're considered present. So for example, if you're, at any time after that, so let's say that the school day starts at seven forty-five, you're tardy up until a certain point, and then eventually you become absent. The SIS rate refers to you being present in a particular period or portion of the day.
So you shut up for one class and then you left?
You, you had a doctor's appointment in the morning, and then you came back in the afternoon.
Should we be concerned that the, um, the trough for the ninth graders would move to ten, eleven, twelve as the next three years progress?
Absolutely. That's why we're, that's why we're taking it on full force right away, because not only, not only from this, but every school district in Vermont, every school district across the nation is facing, um, an issue of chronically absent students. A chronically absent student is a student who is considered to have missed ten percent or more days. So ten percent in our case is gonna be seventeen point eight days, um, but that's over the course of the entire year. There are some students who are gonna miss seventeen days in the first semester. So we need to be proactive in not just filing truancy, we need to be proactive in trying to find out why they're not coming to school. And so, um, that is incredibly important to me.
And the difference between elementary and middle school and high school?
You're a question.
Attendance is pretty.
You answered it.
Oh, sorry. Um, but yeah, I, it's, if we want to have these outcomes, whether, whether it's college, whether it's college, whether it's, you know, technology, careers, um, just life in general, we need to have the students here so that they can develop the options. And this is, it, it, I think it, this is definitely gonna cut across socioeconomic status, and so we need to be sure that we're reaching out to every family that we can. Yes?
I have a question. Um, so for the full-day attendance rate, does that, if a student is just really late, does that count as being absent, or would that be considered one of like the full-day attendance?
That's a really good question. So like, at a high school, if you show up, let's say you miss your first two blocks, you're absent for those two blocks, but then you make it up by showing up for the last two blocks. So you have a, you have an absence for those days, and so you'll sometimes see that you have a different number of absences for first block as opposed to the third block. And so all that really goes into, I'm not sure if students, I, I would imagine that they do, if they, if they have a certain number of absences, that they lose credit, or they're not able to gain. Michael, do you know the answer to that question?
Yeah, so we don't, we don't have a, a procedure on, um, missing a certain number of classes and not receiving credit, as we're moving towards being a proficiency-based school. Uh, I think one, one thing that I, I, I see the orange line as like, what percentage of kids on our rosters walk into the building on a given day? Is that a fair way to describe that, Renee?
Absolutely.
So, and then the, the blue line is what percentage of students attended every attendance-taking opportunity on that day? So our, you know, in, in our, in our ninth grade, right, we have concerns about that. We have concerns that maybe that's some students who left early, um, that may be students who have skipped a class. Correct me if I'm wrong, Renee, but I think that that would be in the poll as well, if the students skip the second block or something like that.
Yeah, if they were, if they didn't show up to a class that they were supposed to and they were counted absent. So it, uh, go ahead and finish, and then I have a, I have a thought to go along with your, what you're, because that joggled something else.
Yeah, I mean, you know, in a, in a seven-twelve building, we're gonna take attendance five or six times during the day in the various classes that students are in. Um, so I think it's, it's not surprising that we see a little bit of a gap there, and I do think, you know, we saw, we saw high numbers of class skips, uh, last year particularly in our ninth grade, so I think that explains that, that gulf right there.
So the other piece that I would, um, also somewhere in here, if there are substitutes or people who are not necessarily the teacher of record, who is keeping track of that class, there could be some miscounting of absences or presences, presence, I don't know, uh, attendance, uh, of that class. So that could be something that we, um, we work with our people who are covering the classes to make sure that they're taking attendance properly.
That, that was gonna be my question, is how much data entry error is there in this? Because I know on several occasions, I'd see that my son wasn't in class, and I'd say, where are you? I'm in class, and for whatever reason, they didn't get marked in class, so, um.
So that's something that we will have to investigate over the course of a year.
The data's only as good as the person who entered the data, so.
Well, it gives us.
And consistency in reporting who is tardy or absent. I don't, I would say I've not seen consistency across the board from teachers.
Yeah, so, so this will give us a benchmark to make us look at our systems and make sure that we're accounting for students when they are in class and when they're not in class. Cuz it's, it's everybody's responsibility. Yeah?
A mid-thought, but is this, is the attendance, is the attendance rate, is this based off of students who just aren't showing up like a no-call, is this based off of parent call-ins or somewhat, or is it both? Is it, is there like a separate, um, I don't know, sorry, yeah.
So these are going to be unexcused and excused absences?
Combined, okay, okay. Okay, gotcha.
Do we have a theory about the drop from pre-K to kindergarten, or is that a statistical blip for one year, or is there any, um, why would five percent? Why would there be a five percent drop-off between those ages, which is then pretty consistent with the rest of this education?
Is the three-year-old program two days and the four-year-old program's four?
So I think.
Depends.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I think that, um, I think that some of it depends upon the reporting because of how it's entered into, um, they all, they all do submit it by computer now. That was sort of a thing to begin with.
It's hard to do when you're a kindergarten teacher.
Right.
And you're dealing with.
No, I meant the pre-K, I meant.
The pre-K, oh, the pre-K, well, the pre-K too.
But, um, I do think that it's interesting because, and I'm speaking just from, you know, my experience of one school as a principal, but I do think that when, um, our kindergarten, um, when kiddos go into kindergarten, they're oftentimes no longer in the same daycare setting as they were before. So they had a daycare provider that once, when they were in pre-K, they often had care. So if they were sick in pre-K, they had a provider. So I think when they're in kindergarten, there's a little more illness that sort of happens, or they stay home a little more proactively. I just think there's a lot of things that kind of go along with that, um, that make it a little more challenging in kindergarten.
It's in preschool, we're talking preschool.
What's that?
We're talking four-year-old.
Yeah, we, we did see, uh, since the, since COVID, we have seen declining numbers, especially in the three-year-old programs. And then last year was the first year where we revamped our programs to make them full-day versus part-day. Um, and, you know, the turn of that event, that might have been happy for some three-year-old parents, and some three-year-old parents might say they thought that was too much.
It's not mandated, but it's, you know.
It's mandated we offer, not they attend.
That's right.
Not yet.
Right.
Not yet. It's, it's on the books right now that
Yeah.
uh, four, uh, four-year-olds will be mandated full-time for next year.
And also kindergarten, there isn't, um, you can't be truants in kindergarten.
Right.
So, which you know that.
But it's not kindergarten. Kindergarten seems to be consistent with the school. It's the four-year. No, and I, and I think that you're right, that parents were more cautious around sickness and just, you know.
See you later. Thanks for coming. Okay, any other questions for Renee regarding his presentation?
Thank you so much, Dan. I appreciate the paper, Bobby, too.
Yeah, me too.
Alright, so we're moving on down the road here. Alright, so governance process. Um, at our last meeting in June, due to time constraints, we skipped our board monitoring reports, four-point-one and four-point-seven. Those should be in your packet. Um, we can start with four-point-one, which was governing style. Governing style. And so that should be, um, last year's report is in the supplemental documents for you. Um, the one thing we do obviously change is the dates. But is there anything else there that you would like to see changed, or that we didn't do or did do?
What page are we looking at?
I have no idea.
Okay.
Sorry. Twenty-one, oh, now we're at twenty-one.
Now we're at twenty-one.
Uh, so where are we, okay. If you don't see anything, just shake your head at me or whatever, and we can, um, someone just needs to make a motion to approve. Or accept.
I'll move and then, we can just.
Is there a second?
I'll second it. Leslie.
Leslie, okay. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of four-point-one governing style, um, as amended with the new dates, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed?
Nay.
Okay, any abstentions? Okay, and the next one is four-point-seven, which should be page twenty-three maybe?
Uh, yep.
Oh, twenty-four, alright, sorry, my bad. Um, four-point-seven, uh, if someone wants to make a motion.
I'll move to approve.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Fernanda. Okay, any discussion regarding that one?
This is.
This is governance investment.
Well, just for the benefit of the new members, I, I point out that the need for column called reasonable interpretation is a hint that this is a badly-written document, that if you, if you want a little exercise, go read the first ten amendments to the U.S. Constitution, and you're gonna see simplicity and clarity rather than wordiness and vague bureaucratic language. So these, that's, that's a, that's a basic problem with, with policy governments, and that's the reason why I often vote no on these things, just because wading through this, and you're gonna find, the more seriously you take these and carefully look at them and try to think of better ways to, to word them, uh, you're gonna grow more and more frustrated with them.
Any other comments? Changes? All those in favor of four-point-seven?
Well, I just, um.
Oh, sorry.
We have things in here that are old.
Oh, okay.
Like north campus training?
Oh, we did north campus training, that's why it's there.
That was like two years ago.
That was like three years ago, um, yeah.
I, I mean.
So we could take that up, it's fine. I mean, the last time we did board training was with, um.
Well, I mean, we did it tonight, we could call it.
That's true, you can add that to it, yeah.
Well, we need to come up with eight hours, right? That's statute for board training?
Uh, no, see, they were talking about board chair and superintendent.
Okay.
We have to have eight hours.
You have to have, we don't.
No.
Okay.
So you're removing north campus training?
Yeah, and adding tonight's training from, um, Dina, uh, Dina gave us a training on open meeting law and the new changes.
Should we, should we be concerned at all about the mentioning of proper funds for et cetera, et cetera?
Where are you?
Things that we don't have any funds?
Oh, you mean as far as professional development funds?
Yeah, yeah, like.
Well, are those, is that the same funds that it's referring to here, right? I mean,
I'm not looking.
To support governance, is that what those funds are, are we talking about the same bucket?
I think you're right that we should note that the funds were cut for this year.
Alright.
So number one, number one.
Funds cut for the twenty-four, twenty-five year?
Yeah.
Okay. And we had open meeting law, uh, training tonight. Anything else? Anything else? Okay, all those in favor with those changes, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed?
Nay.
Any abstentions? Okay, thank you for passing both of those. The next thing on our agenda is board vacancies. We still have two vacancies, one for the Whiting rep, which is a three-year term and an at-large position for a three-year term. I have requested that Melinda put that back into the papers. But if you know anybody from Whiting or any other town who might be interested in the at-large, please have them submit their letter of interest to Melinda or myself. And I will be asking the gentleman from Pittsburgh, Mr. Babcock, if he would like to. He was running for the Pittsburgh side, but I'll ask him if he's interested in the at-large position. I did not do that during the summer. So if you know anyone, send them our way. Board member mentorship, so I asked Melinda to put this on the agenda because for our brand-new board members, policy governance is kind of a big thing and sometimes it's hard to understand. If you are at all interested in having another board member help you or if you have questions after a board meeting or before a board meeting so that you can connect, you're more than welcome to connect with me at any time. But if you wanted someone that you could solely talk to back and forth, let me know and we can hook you up with someone, okay? All right, so you don't have to decide now, but just know that they're available. Okay, uh, let's see, board final year end surplus funds. Believe it or not, we had surplus funds last year.
No way.
I know, so Brenda's here, I think, can you tell us what that number was? It's not on the agenda.
That stinks.
We, anyway, we ended up, um.
I can look it up, it was a good number, I don't remember.
It was a good number, I'm thinking it was like a million dollars.
No way.
Yeah, so, and we had already approved to move those surplus funds into our facility fund at our June 18th meeting. So, but I'm pretty sure that's what.
Here's your boiler.
I'll look that up, I can't remember.
Yep, there's the boiler.
There's the boiler.
Maybe, depending on what it takes out. All right, so priorities for facility funds, this is the OVA survey results, continued discussion. That is why Michael is here currently. This was talking about if we needed additional private bathrooms. Do you remember that discussion from long, long ago? And we're also here to talk about other facility discussions, that's why Brenda is here. And Rich, I believe, is here too, who is our facilities director under Brenda. So which one, Michael, why don't you start us off with, yeah, he's there.
Where did he go?
Don't worry, I'm here. So you all have, you know, this is now going back pretty close to a year around a survey that we had done of staff and students around what they felt were our highest priorities for facilities. I'm just pulling it up, I'm gonna need a moment to, to have that in front of me. In part, you know, we, we had, and again, as Lori mentioned, this came out of a discussion the board was having around adding additional private bathrooms on the first floor of Otter Valley and the board sort of asking like, are these, is this the right investment, right? Is, is this a real problem that we need to address or is this a solution in search of a problem? And are there other higher level priorities needs for Otter Valley? So that survey came back and one moment to get everything. And I think that that came back with a couple of different takeaways. I think one critical one is that the relatively mundane facilities items are most on people's minds. And I say mundane not to say unimportant, in fact, the opposite. So, so teachers talking about improvements to the physical security, the exterior of the building, physical security and the locks and doors, you know, having doors that lock consistently, having doors that shut and, and all operate in the same way. One of the items that was lower on that list, but highest amongst our students in the middle school was a renovation of the existing middle school bathrooms. And, you know, when, when I, when I sort of, sort of took that data and gave my meaning to it, to me, that's a, that's a really clear priority. You know, those bathrooms are old and, and really need a significant renovation in order to, to be welcoming for our youngest students. So for me, the data tells me that, like, we really wanna look at locks and doors and physical security and we also wanna look at our middle school bathrooms. Is that what you were looking for from me, Lori, or is there something else I can provide?
Yeah, I think so, so the, the only question I really do have is that that whole situation came out of a safety concern from parents that we needed more private bathrooms. Do you feel from this survey that that is really the highest need or would make more sense to renovate the seventh grade bathrooms because they are in need of help? And to do the locks and doors instead?
Yeah, so, so good question, Lori. So I think that, I'm pretty sure that that's on the survey, right? Like addition, addition of single-stall bathrooms and that came up in, in the middle to the lower end of the results. You know, there was, there was a lot of community concern about safety at Otter Valley in 22, 23. You know, the, the issue that brought this to the board forefront was around concerns about male students using female bathrooms. Through all of our investigations, through all of our looking at that, that, that was one student, one time that had, that, a male identifying student that had accessed a girl's bathroom. That we were able to, to really pinpoint. So, yeah, I mean, I think that, that there, there were some legitimate safety concerns about the state of Otter Valley a year and a half ago. But I, I don't think that the single-stall bathrooms are the source, or the, the the small number of single-stall bathrooms are the source of those safety issues that, that we needed to deal with.
And just so, we do have new board members here and to refresh my memory, there had also been questions about in the actual locker rooms, because that's another discussion that we had at the time, was curtains and things like that. I'm assuming that those are up so that that can also give some kids privacy?
Yeah, you're, I would have to, I, I am sure that we put them in and I, I haven't toured the locker rooms recently, but I.
What? No, I don't know why, okay.
I am sorry, Lori.
All right, um, okay. So from that survey that he has, I guess our discussion needs to be whether or not. Well, our discussion needs to be where do we wanna put our funds? I mean, you've heard from Mr. Rappel.
Can we hear from Richard?
Sure.
What his priorities are?
Rich, are you there? He must be in Barcelona or wherever that is.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Are you asking us about single-stall bathrooms?
Trying to get my mic to work.
Oh, there we go, okay.
There he is.
Are you asking us about reports that we have asked Casey, our architect, for?
Oh.
Like the single-stall bathrooms, the middle school options? Or are you now asking us, and in line with the single-stall bathroom conversations, you directed Michael to survey students, which he did?
Right.
And now you're, I, I wanna make sure I understand what you're asking. Now are you asking, if we have $1 million, where would we spend it?
We got it.
We got it.
It's on the napkin.
Or $1,1663? Where would we spend it? I'm gonna be honest with you, we have not had that conversation as a team. So if, and, and I think if you're asking Rich, where would you spend it at Otter Valley? It might be a different conversation than where would you spend it throughout the district?
Through globally, okay.
I would like to know that.
I would too, yeah.
If we, if we're making a decision about these single-stall shower facilities, I mean, I could make a decision on that tonight.
Well, and I think that actually is probably what our discussion revolves around, because that's what we asked them to do. So, do we need those single, so, right.
It's not gonna cost a million dollars, so we're still gonna have to have that discussion.
I think we had a price, didn't we, didn't Casey give us a price? Michael, do you remember?
For redoing the whole locker room.
But, yeah, but we don't have a price for these other.
I'm gonna dig in, there were, I think, three different options that Casey quoted as that, or estimated as that.
So when you say other options, you mean the other options he gave?
In the survey.
In the survey.
Like fixing doors and improving security around the building and windows and.
Always gonna be security.
Right, so Brenda, I have a question for you and Rich probably. Did you, were you able to take that survey and then link it to where we are on our facility? Like, you always have summer projects come up and, and these things that we're talking about right now would be summer projects. You know, like if they redo the, the seventh grade bathrooms, that's a summer project for next summer. I doubt it's gonna be done this year.
Right.
To be completely honest, unless they're able to do it during a vacation, maybe during December or something.
Same with the locker rooms.
Right, yeah, so these are all, this would all be summer projects, so they wouldn't get done. But I guess my other question is, is that for the two things that Michael did mention, which is the renovation of the seventh grade bathrooms and the locks and doors, where might those be on our facility master plan anyway?
So that simple answer to your question is, uh, no. We didn't kind of take a look at the student-led priorities into the whole facility. It's a good idea to do, we didn't, we didn't think about it. You know, last spring, we had other priorities. I think we could do some work on that and look at our facility operating plan. We are aware that the bathrooms that Michael is talking about, they're 30 years old this year. And no renovations have been done to them since they were built in 1995. So, you know, we've, we haven't kind of looked at that as an urgent priority, but we do recognize that that's an issue. We recognize that we've been fighting with the boiler a little bit and the boiler is fairly new. And, yeah, want me to keep going?
Sure, no, I'm, no, but no, so. Well, that just lets everyone know that there are lots of facility needs here at Otter Valley, but we also have to manage those with the other facility needs of our other buildings. So, going back, I am gonna let everyone know that our surplus was $1,1663. That is what got put into our facility fund at the end of last year. And so right now, our facility fund is pretty healthy, I think, overall. But we do wanna make sure, especially as we go into the next budget seasons, that we don't continue to have these overages, because that sends a message to our, our constituents that our budgets are too high. And it also, we need, you know, we just need to manage, we have facility funds, we wanna be able to use some of those, but we also wanna have a budget that's pretty tight so that we're not seeing these huge numbers until we're back into business with a great economy and everybody's got lots of money.
So we, do we need to do anything tonight?
No, so I think what it boils down to is that, the question here is, do we want to move forward with the private bathrooms that Casey brought forward to us last year? And I'm, from my standpoint, I don't think so, I mean, we haven't heard from anybody.
I'm inclined to say no.
Since they came and talked about their safety concerns about this issue, so I don't think it's that pertinent. And we do have some self-bathrooms, we have the general neutral bathroom, we have a single bathroom in the nurses' station. So we do have some other single bathrooms that people can use if they need them. And so I think what this boils down to for us with facilities is that what we want at some point, and you give it to us every year when you decide summer projects, but maybe a more, instead of just a list of the summer projects that you're gonna do, I would love a presentation about where we are in the whole grand scheme of things and these are why these are next and why this has a one, why it doesn't, why this one's a three. And maybe the, maybe the seventh grade bathroom wing is a three still and not a number one. I hope not for all those seventh and eighth graders, but never know. So.
Yeah, I think, I think that would be a great idea and, you know, kind of prioritize maybe the top three to five items in each of the facilities and, you know, then maybe the next five might be, just to kind of lay that out so you.
And, and some big ones, you know, I mean, one of the things I keep hearing about is all of the plumbing in Otter Valley, you know, that they're starting to get leaks and, you know, has the solder run out from 19, whatever year the building was built? And.
61.
Okay, so, you know, so there's that. Before I get to you, I saw Brett's hand was up, so I'm gonna go to Brett. Yeah.
Yeah, I have a question, I guess. Do we, do we know the factors that led to there being such a surplus funds? It seemed like there was a, a real shortage going into the end of last year, to the point where, you know, I, I just know for my kids, right? I mean, the, the PTO had to pay for field trips at the end of the year because there wasn't any funds available. I mean, is this a budgeting issue? Why, why was there so much money left over? I mean, was there factors that were unforeseen or, because it does feel like student outcomes were impacted when there was evidently plenty of money.
I think these are a lot of positions that weren't filled, as I recall from Kristin, when you guys told me originally what the number was.
So if I can.
These were unfilled last year though, right?
Right, yeah, they were unfilled last year, so they, they were part of our budget, but they were unfilled positions.
So if I can, I don't want to diminish that a million dollars is a small amount.
No, it's not.
But it is 3%, 3.5% of our budget. So it's, it's, it's a lot of money, but it's, I think most people would say, if you budget your household budget within 3.5% of what you thought, you'd call that a win. And you're right, it is department budgets that were very conservative in spending and purchasing supplies and materials. It was staff positions that were left open for the whole year and could be filled or were, we had unfortunately a lot of revolving doors in regards to the facility staffing as well as substitutes, we had a real hard time with substitutes where principals became classroom teachers a lot of the time.
Yep.
So, I mean, I, you know, I, I get that, but with all due respect, I mean, our PTO, we, we had to contribute 30% of our budget directly to our teachers and our budget is like $15,000, right? So that's a significant amount of our budget going directly towards things like field trips. And it does seem like that there was money available. I just think we're asking too much of our parents. You know, people work really hard to fundraise that money and come to find out there's a million dollars left in the budget at the end of the year. I mean, that's, that's kind of a slap in people's face.
Well, again, unless you go through line by line and see where that money was, you know, maybe Lothar had spent all of their money and maybe this is from a different pot of money, I don't know.
There is a lot of truth to that. I also don't know the relationships with the principals and the, and the PTOs and how they support each other. I, I'm not involved in that, so I can't, can't provide any knowledge on it.
And can you just use funds, right? I mean, they're, they're allocated to certain items, you can't just easily move. I mean, they're, they're allocated to certain items, you can't just easily move them around, right?
You can.
Well, you can, I mean, we're approving a budget, all we do is approve a number, even though they're in a budget, oh.
You know, can they just say, oh, well, we're not filling this position right now, here's some extra money for you? Like, they're not in a position to do that.
No, not like that, but they, they could look at their repairs and maintenance funds and see they're not spending it all, and maybe say, oh, you know, we need something here for the chemistry lab, or the, you know, whatever.
Yeah.
So, who know, who knows where those, those funds, I couldn't tell you.
Yeah, I just don't think it's as simple as, oh.
No, I don't think it's as simple as saying, right.
You could've just used that money for that, I don't think it's that.
I, and I don't think at the time when you're talking field trip, Brett, that everybody knew that was the number, because what's happening is, is everything's being shut off at, what, June?
First.
June first, June first is the cutoff date for everybody to, who wants to spend money towards the end of the year. And, um, so, you know, nobody really knows until all those bills come in. And of course, schools.
Yeah, I, I understand that, and I, and I'm not being critical, I, I'm just saying, we ask a lot of our parents, and it, it would be, in a perfect world, we would be able to be more flexible and to have better tracking of those numbers.
Sure.
And I, and I get it, it's complicated, it's not easy, but, um, you know, a million dollars is a lot of money.
Yep, yep, it is. Okay, so, what I'm hearing is that right now, we are not moving forward with, um, private bathrooms, and that we are asking Rich and Brenda to come back to us with a presentation, maybe November, um, talking about what our facility needs are, and where they feel the most, um, where the biggest, uh, problems are, and how much that's gonna cost, and what we can do over the summer, because that's the other thing, we can only do so much in twelve weeks, and it's not even twelve weeks, is it?
Absolutely.
So.
I have a question about the boiler.
Yeah.
You said it was fairly new, I assume that you have your yearly maintenance checkups done on it? And it's under warranty, and you're dealing with all of that?
Warranties are usually only about a year, but we have been working with the boiler manufacturer. Uh, it was put in in two thousand and fifteen or sixteen, I, I don't remember the exact year. Um, so, so by life of boiler standards, it is fairly new.
Right, teenager, okay, thank you.
Is the problem the same reoccurring problem with it?
I'm gonna defer to Rich on this, so just to let you know, um, the boiler that I'm talking about is the pellet boiler that went in as part of the performance contract. That is our primary boiler in the winter, but it can never be our sole boiler in the winter, because when we have those extreme cold days, or even on both ends of the season, when we don't have cold enough days, we have backup boilers, backup fuel boilers, that kick on to support kind of beginning and end of season, when your weather is a little bit more hot and cold, and during the extreme cold of the year. And Rich, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it was, well, you can say whether it was the fuel boilers or the pellet boilers that failed in the winter this year.
So, we have the one pellet boiler and two, number two oil burn, burner, uh, boilers. Uh, one runs at a time, um, with the pellet boiler, both oil burners do not run at the same time. One of them was rebuilt, uh, two thousand and twenty-two. They're both twenty-plus years old. Again, we have them serviced all the time, they run fine, but again, they are twenty-plus years old.
Those are the oil ones?
Yes.
Okay.
The oil burner's a twenty-plus years old, but again, we have, we, we have them serviced all the time, keep them up to date, we do have an on-demand hot water propane heater that we run to heat the hot water when we need that, when, um, but again, the pellet boilers were put in two thousand and sixteen, but that's not something that can heat the whole building, we have to run an oil burner at the same time, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so, um, probably November, December, we'll ask you for that, which will be right during budget season. Okay. All right. Uh, let's see, well, we talked about that, prioritize our facility funds, we did that. Continue discussion and finalize board goals, which I thought we already did.
We did the priorities.
Um, I think, oh, it just says continued middle school model discussion. So, there is, that discussion, I think, is still ongoing, I think we still need to continue to have it. Um, I think that's just a discussion that needs to happen, you know, um, we do have the old plans that talk about what we could do at this building. Um, we probably need to bring those back and then look at those, and then also figure out if that's what we need for space.
It would be helpful, I mean, I think you're talking about doing that assessment, right, and demographic. I think that we need that information to be able to inform that decision.
Sure.
That's part of the reason why we're.
Yeah.
Yep.
And what's going on in Montpelier with this Rhode Island model that they were supposedly gonna follow for school construction? Has anything happened with that?
I have not heard anything about it.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
The Rhode Island, um, model?
En masse model where they, where they, uh, where the central agency of education pays for the facilities, kinda like what we used to do before.
Back in the good old days, they, we, we never paid a hundred, we only paid thirty percent.
Yeah.
I know that, um, there was conversation at the last budget, the year before, about reinstating some sort of capital. The bo- the agency of education sent out people to assess all of the buildings, and they provided us with reports and another piece of data that helps us identify our priorities, and their estimations of costs were horrifically off, and they even told us that. They used, um, construction costs that was five or six years old, so even when they identified schools, um, that needed construction, their projected costs were not realistic. I don't know where that's gonna go, or if that's gone anywhere since the, you know, since the situation last year with tax rates and, um, and spending. And there is still the PCB testing that's out there. Um, we are, we have one school that has been tested, the others are still on the list. So, there's a couple of statewide initiatives in regards to, uh, construction, and no green stuff with it.
So, the cavalry isn't coming to help us pay for this?
I don't think so.
No cavalry.
I need to vote for the cavalry, I don't know that they're on the, I don't know that they're on the ballot. Okay, so we will bring back the middle school model discussion in our second meeting in, um, September.
Just ask a quick question, looking, looking at the materials, were there any costs associated with these?
No, not at the time, it wa- it was, we might have, so what happened was, is it, it was in two thousand and nineteen that we talked about either out in the old football or, or here, and then cavalry was a discussion later, two years later.
Right, right.
Cavalry got ruled out because it's, I mean, it's real space, but it would not have been conducive to a middle school. Um, and so now we're back to this building, and we know building a brand-new building probably is not something that our, our community can stomach, but maybe they can think about adding on and creating more space, um, for the middle schoolers, um, and, you know, so that's the discussion I think we need to have. Um, I could be wrong. Um, other business for future consideration, so is there anything on anybody's mind, um, that we need to talk about as a board going forward?
Do we have an update on the lights?
Oh, yes, the lights are going in as we speak. So, um, I can tell you that, um, there are potentially two dates that, uh, the football team could have, uh, lights, light night, night games under the lights. Those are September thirteenth and September twentieth, if the, um, lights can go in on time, and if they can get everything set up and hunky-dory. So, those are Saturdays, um, but yes, the polls are here, and they've started the groundwork. I don't know if the polls are in yet, though I haven't driven out back to see. So, Michael, do you know?
I don't know if the polls are up yet, I know they're on site, um, and the, the groundwork has been done. Um, we're still planning for, yes, that they'll be in, I think there's a lot of work being done this weekend, Rich can add more. I would add that in addition to the, uh, football games that we're planning under the lights, all, all, with the exception of the homecoming game, uh, we are planning for all of our girls' soccer games to be under the lights as well.
Oh, cool.
The polls, excuse me, the polls are scheduled to go up August thirtieth.
Okay. Awesome. All right, uh, well, if you do think of other business, please email me. Um, superintendent informational report, anything you wanna chat about?
Uh, no, just that the piece that we, one little addition that I, uh, has taken place since then is that we had an additional administrative retreat, uh, yesterday, where we had, uh, presentations from the Vermont Principals Association on leadership. It was a really good time for us to, to get to know each other even more. Um, we, they have this wonderful presentation utilizing, um, uh, leadership lessons from the television show Ted Lasso, uh, and just many of the situations in which, uh, he or other characters from the show utilize, um, strategies from Simon Sinek, from, um, Brene Brown, um, or from, um, Covey, uh, the son. Um, and just being able to put all those things into contacts for all our administrators, it gave us an opportunity to learn, um, very relevant ways of, of working with each other and working with our staff, so we really loved it. Um, and then the second half of the day was really getting to know, um, the updates from each of the, the departments, um, so that that way we could go in today when, uh, the new teachers show up, um, that we were ready to, to move forward, and really the school year began today.
Great.
Did you wanna mention the seventh grade issue?
Uh, sure, I'll be happy to. So, uh, we have discovered, well, we've discovered over the, over the course of the last, um, month or so that we have a mold issue that we have to remediate in the seventh grade or east wing of the school that we're in right now. Um, we, um, uh, we have sent Lori a timeline that we could send out to you guys of all the, the, the things that have come into play early on, we thought that it was gonna be, uh, a little less, so we worked with a local company to try to remediate it. As they came in, we received a, um, we received kind of an update from them that it was a little bit larger than what they could handle. Um, and so, we will have a, uh, group onsite Thursday, or tomorrow. We'll have a group onsite tomorrow to give us the full extent of what it's going to mean for, um, the full remediation. However, um, Michael, thanks to, to Michael and Richard and Brenda, we have a plan, uh, for the seventh grade students, um, to, uh, continue their learning and their, 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 their entry into the middle school here on campus. Um, and so, I don't, Michael, would you like to highlight a little bit of what that plan looks like?
Sure, so, um, yeah, the, the plan is that we are going to use existing spaces within the Otter Valley building um, to house our seventh grade students, um, for, it, again, we don't know a de- a definitive timeline, for some amount of time while the remediation takes place. Um, that will include the, the room that you all are sitting in now being temporarily converted into a classroom, um, the shop classroom being converted into a core classroom with, with Mr. Karpak teaching in the shop. Um, there's a science lab that we utilize, and, uh, an intervention classroom where we'll provide intervention in some of our, our smaller spaces. Um, so, staff are gonna be moving around a little bit, uh, to make this all work, but we'll be able to run our normal bell schedule, have the students in the building from eight to two-thirty, um, and, and access just about everything that they were planning to access, uh, prior to discovery of the, the mold situation. Um, you know, I'll say it's been, been certainly a little stressful to problem-solve that, and I anticipate as staff come back, they'll have some, some questions and, and some logistics that we'll need to troubleshoot, but, uh, that, it has been pretty, um, really positive to hear the, the support of our staff in doing what we can to support our seventh grade students.
So, by having them on campus, they'll still be able to, you know, will be able to come here on the bus, they'll be able to have lunch here, they'll also be able to go to their, to their outclasses, like their electives, um, as, you know, normal. Like, they won't have to go to any place special for that, they'll just go where they would normally go. Um, and so.
And Renee, may I also add?
Sure.
That we are, are, this was pre-planned, um, so it's, it's a little bit fortunate um, that our first day of school is for seventh, eighth, and ninth grade students only, so we'll really have that day, um, without most of our high schoolers in the building, for the seventh grade team to really orient the students to, um, the, the logistical, the temporary logistics that they'll be operating.
Ask a question?
Sure.
So, is it just in one or two rooms? Because you, there's eighth, eighth grade classes in that one as well, right? Because you're just saying seventh grade.
It's, I think it's in three classrooms. So, that's what I read in the. So, it's the four classrooms? Because they said two oh two was not affected.
Yeah, there's, there's six classrooms.
Oh, but now it's, okay.
Four core classrooms, uh, and two intervention classrooms. Um, the levels vary, uh, in the different spaces, uh, with some being higher than others. Um, Rich, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think four of the six were above recommended limits, um, and the other ones were, were concerned. That is correct. And then there's also an office, uh, in that area that came back with, with elevated levels of mold.
That's the vice principal.
Where's the funding come for that repair?
So, I believe they have put in an insurance claim, uh, however, that has been denied the first time. So, I'm sure Brenda will be on them to find out why and, and figure out, you know, how to get it processed, um, in our favor, so that hopefully it'll be an insurance claim. Otherwise, um, depending on how extensive, it may have to come out of our facility funds, or it may come out of repairs and maintenance, we'll have to see. So, all we know is we do need to fix it.
There is also an emergency construction aid, should it exceed, um, ten thousand dollars that we would like to pay. So, um, I do have a meeting with the insurance company on Friday.
So, I know that, that Michael has, uh, he's communicated with his staff today. Uh, we're planning on contacting the parents tomorrow, and then we'd like to get ahead of this and, and try to get something out as a press release before the end of the week, so that that way we already have our statement out there, so that way if anybody's calling to ask, we can refer them to the statement.
With the classes up here, will they still have to go use the seventh, eighth grade bathrooms?
No. Because there's bathrooms, no.
Coming in, so.
Well, yeah, no, 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 so there, there's bathrooms up here, but there's also bathrooms downstairs, you know, as you, as you first come into the building, so they'd have access to those.
Yeah, so, uh, we're, we are gonna designate one, we have three kind of group bathrooms at Otter Valley, uh, well, four, counting the seventh grade wing, we'll have three operational, and one of them will be designated short-term as a middle school-only bathroom, uh, because the ones in the seventh grade wing are not accessible. Um, and we, you know, we, we know that, uh, that is a source of, of stress for some of our youngest students, so we will have one of our bathrooms be, one of our boys' bathrooms and one of our girls' bathrooms be middle school.
I thought of something for, uh, a future topic.
Oh, sure.
Um, and, uh, Renee, please tell me if this is premature, but, uh, like, discussion about strategies about improving test scores. Uh, and the reason I'm asking is I did some superficial research on Roland Fryer's work in Houston this summer. Seemed like a lot of innovative ideas, and, um, just hearing more about strategies to motivate kids to, to do better, um, is something worth, a conversation worth having.
The superintendent who brought, uh, brought Fryer into Houston is the one who hired me there too, so, yeah, so I'm familiar with that.
So we'll bring that on when he feels it's necessary? Or when he feels it makes sense to?
Yeah, I mean, we'll, we'll, we'll touch a little bit on it with our baseline, uh, next month.
Yeah.
With our continuous improvement plan. Um, and then I, you know, part of the, part of the, uh, the improvement strategy is going to be really looking at the, the global lens and saying, where is it that we wanna be? Um, because the, the improvement of test scores, um, is part of a giant system. Uh, it's not, so we just wouldn't just do it just for, for, to say we have good test scores. We have to make sure that the teachers and the students recognize that getting, doing better on certain tests will improve their outcomes later. And so, uh, we have to make sure that we have that system set up so that when we do have the strategies ready to go, they make a lot more sense.
Thanks.
Okay, so, um, just to let everybody know, our next board meeting is here, Tuesday, September third, at six PM. Um, and then our other board meeting is Tuesday, September seventeenth, also here at six PM. And if nobody has anything else to talk about, we don't need executive session. Um, I would say you can all say bye-bye if you wanna do that.
Hi, move to.
By consensus, okay, perfect. Thank you, good night.
Thank you.